Camera action. We're ready. All right. Hi, everyone, and I will welcome you all to a meeting of the Concord School Committee, which I would like to call to order at this time.
And I'd like to call to order the select board for this capital planning meetings. You don't have to follow role, we're all here.
We're all here. Yeah, we have no, none of our participants are. Um, it's your meeting, right?
Yes, well, actually. Put me over to Kerry LaFleur, our town manager, who will lead the discussion of the town's capital programs. And then I think if there's anything from the school side, we might hear from the superintendent.
Okay, so good evening. I am Kerry LaFleur, town manager, and Dr. Hunter and I actually have a consolidated presentation. Right? So if if we could bring up the presentation, that would be appreciated. So I wanted to start this evening just to provide a very high level overview of the process that we have, because this is only our second year through this process. So we had a capital, next slide, please, capital planning task force that outlined a process, which is detailed on this slide. And again, this is the second year that we're going through this. The process requires an integrated decision making, so the town and the school meet to review priorities and try to come to a common set of priorities using a standard evaluation criteria that for each of these projects, we have a debt template that we created through the capital planning task force. So we show the projected tax impact for these projects, because these are all presumed to be debt financed and likely exempt debt finance, so outside of Prop 2 and 1/2. And that we also have a, an impact calculator. We put this together for the middle school project. So anybody can go online, plug in their own assessed value for their property and see what their specific impact is. And this is important, because we are typically stating the impact in terms of median assessed value. And obviously, not, not everybody is there. So as part of this process, there are three opportunities for public presentation. The meeting we're having this evening, which is a joint meeting with the school committee and select board, and this is to present the draft plan. It is the beginning of a 45-day comment period. And then in November, we present to the finance committee, and it's at that meeting that we talk more about the tax impact, the projected tax impact, and how, how we might phase these projects or lay them out over time. And so that's the meat of that discussion. And then we come back again to this joint body in December to present the final plan. Next slide. And so here, I'll pause, and I think Dr. Hunter wanted to speak in a moment.
Yeah, it will be very brief. We're very grateful for the support of the middle school, and that's been the priority for a long time now, and there aren't really any other in the pipeline to this tier three level. There are probably some more at a lower level along the way, but those are still yet to be determined at best. So I think overall, the schools are in great shape, and we're grateful for the support.
Okay, next slide, please. So I probably should have said, we're talking about what we refer to as tier three. And tier three is defined as a capital project that has either a single year impact of $5 million or more, or phased project, $5 million or more. So we do have a process for tiers one and two for the smaller capital items, and we're using the same process that we have had all along. So one other thing that that I want to mention to sort of help set the stage for the town projects is this municipal facilities, and I brought this as, as a prop. Our municipal facilities assessment and master plan that was completed in 2020, but it was started either in end of 2018 or 2019. And we hired a local architect, TBA architects, to look at all of our municipal spaces. And so they looked at 14 sites, which included 18 buildings, 240,000 square feet, 35 departments, 260 FTEs. So very comprehensive, as you know, are the town facilities are really spread across the, across the town. And so they looked at all of them. One thing that was particularly helpful is they drafted or created as-built. So we had, we have a number of buildings that are very old, and we didn't necessarily have plans for them. So that was key to this process. They also surveyed the existing buildings, and they were trying to find out how we might make better use of the buildings that we have. And then they also looked at sort of the dreaming phase of it. If if we could sort of design everything over again, what we might be looking at. Next slide, please. So they created three different scenarios that was part of their charge. The first was no relocation, and they were just looking at maintenance costs and improvements on site to improve efficiency. What they determined, and all of, all of these dollars are in $2019, that's, that's what this is stated at. So $7.6 million in internal maintenance needed at the time, and $6.6 million in improvements to existing space to create better efficiency. Scenario B was a little more extensive, looking at major renovations, but where buildings exist. So not moving, not acquiring any new properties or moving anything around, but major renovations to existing. And that was over a 10-year period. That was estimated at 66 million. And then scenario C really got into reconfigurations and relocations. And there's so many different permutations there that I didn't list particular costs. So all of this is available online, and there's a link in the presentation to where you can view it online. Next slide, please. So we have identified priorities, but understanding that the middle school building project is the highest priority, we really are yet to plug anything into the next 10-year phase. I think we thought, when we had the vote on the middle school, that maybe we could do that for, for this time around. But you know, you know where we are with, with the middle school. So we'd like to wait and, and get that project completely launched before we start talking about how we might phase in some of these other projects. So I do have priority 1A and priority 1B. And the reason I've listed them in this manner is, when we started this under former town manager Chris Whalen, he had identified public works as the highest priority. Former town manager Stephen Crane identified public safety as the highest priority. They're, they're both very high priorities, and, you know, unfortunately, they, they can't both move at the same time. I did identify public works as priority 1A, because back in 2014, the town approved money for a feasibility study, master plan study. So we have that in hand, and we're, we're more positioned to move forward with, with public works. We also think that if we are able to move forward on the existing site, there's a way to phase it, to make it far, much more palatable in the next 10-year period. Priority three then would be Walden Street. That is the head, current headquarters station. So the public safety complex would be relocating that to, to a different site. And we'll talk about, just at a very high level, why that needs to happen. And then the Walden Street complex, we would look to renovate and relocate some of our departments over there. The fourth priority, so we talked about these three a year ago. At least, that's my recommendation, recollect, recollection. The fourth priority is the annually recurring need for public works infrastructure. And that is somewhat new. It wasn't presented at this forum a year ago, but we certainly talked about it as we moved through our tier-two capital planning process last year. Next slide. So the public, actually, could you go to the, to the next slide? And I think, I think it's easier to look at a picture while I'm, I'm talking about this. So the, the, this is our Kaiser Road campus. There are multiple buildings here. The buildings were built between 1903 and the, in the mid 1950s. The current site layout is not conducive to operations. It's not fenced, so it's, it's completely open. Anybody can access this property at, at any time, day or night. It is within the existing floodplain, so it has limited growth potential. There is woefully inadequate storage for vehicles, equipment, and materials. And you can see, I've got a couple of things circled. You can, we have just hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of equipment that is not under roof. We have everything. The bays that we have under roof, they are jam-packed, so it's, it's not like we're not using those. And it's quite a maneuvering process to get vehicles in and out. But again, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of equipment that is exposed to the elements, and so we're not getting 100% of the useful life out of that. And our interior spaces really are lacking for, for modern office space. If you could go to, to the next picture, I think I just like this next picture, but you can see, this is. I like big trucks. So this is where this equipment is, is stored. So when they are getting ready for winter operations, these vehicles are, they're outside, they're exposed to the elements. And, you know, it just makes it tough. And so I will leave it at that with the, with the pictures. I know you have limited time. I didn't, I didn't want to take up a whole lot, so you have some time for discussion. Next slide. So the next, this shows, this is from our, our study, our 2020 study. And you can see down at the bottom, the existing site is 9.75 acres. We need close to 14 acres. We do have an opportunity, a likely opportunity to purchase or acquire an adjacent piece of property. And so we could stay at, at this existing site, and we could make it work. But it, it doesn't work in its current configuration. In $2019, to, to redevelop at this existing location, it came in at 29.9 million. At a new location, it was more like 46.2 million. Obviously, these numbers are, are low now. What we intend to do is to move forward with that feasibility and master plan study. And we are particularly interested in identifying a way to phase redevelopment or development, specifically if we stay at this site. But even if, even if we were to move to a new site, and we don't have anything readily apparent as a place we would move, we're thinking a phased development makes more sense over the next planning period because of the debt load that, that residents are currently carrying. So, next slide. So our priority 1B is the public safety complex. The existing site on Walden Street is 1.59 acres. According to the study, we need about eight and a half acres. So the existing site can only accommodate about 25% of what we need. The building is about a third too small for what we need. And we have significant health and safety issues. This building was built in 1961. If you could just flip through the next couple of slides. Here, just some pictures for you to see the condition of, of the outside building. So it's definitely a need of repair. And then the next slide. Inside, so this, this is a, a particular issue, the, the slide that has, has the fire truck. You can see that there's very little clearance between the top of the truck and, and the equipment that is, that is mounted in the roof. It's actually an inch and a half. And so, again, built in 1961, fire apparatus is bigger than, than it used to be. So this, this is a problem for us. And then you can see the apron here is in need of repair. On this slide, this really is to demonstrate issues that we have with HVAC and inadequate ventilation. Next slide. And this just shows the picture that is on my right-hand side. That is a bunk room that has been turned into an office, and on the left, that is a closet that has been turned into an office. Next slide. So then Walden Street redevelopment. We don't really know yet what we would put there, and so what, how we would renovate that. Really, we, we just don't know at, at this point in time. And then next slide. So this is, this is the new item. On an annual basis, the town has been budgeting about $2 million per year for pavement management, for any work that we do to parking lots, sidewalks, drainage infrastructure. And the, the real need is, depending on the year, about three and a half to almost $8 million. And this is something that, that came to light through last year's capital planning process. I'm not sure, I was aware that what we were budgeting, $2 million, how far off it was. And so we, we need to figure out what to do here. Our current tier-two plan, which is, is what we finance within the levy, it's about $5 million, give or take, each year. We could use all of that just on, on the public works infrastructure. And the way that that amount is determined is set by policy. And so if we were to do something different, we'd have to look at changing the policy. And so we're, we're still working through that. And we don't necessarily see this as the same type of project as the other ones, because it's an ongoing need. The, the others are, hopefully, you make a major investment, and it's good for 25 to 30 or, or more. So then in summary, just two more slides. So again, while we completed this plan in, in 2020, we have not advanced further design on any of these projects, because we had all identified that the middle school was the highest priority. But we, we do want people to know that the town has significant capital needs, and, and they're probably 50 to 100 million dollars, depending on which ops, options are, are chosen. We, we don't, we don't know what the appetite is for additional spending, and we expect people don't really have an appetite for that right now. So we're trying to, to understand how we might meet our needs and be mindful and respectful of, of the voters of the community. So the feasibility study for public works, we are looking to advance that within the next couple of months to get that going. And we would expect to do something similar for public safety, maybe in a couple of years, because we can't do it too far in advance, or we'll be redoing it as we get closer to actually moving a project forward. And then we need to decide how to, how to adequately fund our annual need for, for our public works infrastructure. And then just on the final slide. I know we don't talk about tax impacts, and we haven't added any tax impact information for any of these new ones, new projects. But this just shows you, for the existing commitments plus the middle school, what the, what the impact is at median tax, median assessed value for each of the years for the existing commitments. And this, this is a gross number. It doesn't include any offset from the middle school stabilization fund. And then a note that currently, our estimate for an additional 10 million, if you look at, at these projects in $10 million increments, that is about $115 a year tax impact at, at median assessed value. And that's assuming a 20-year level debt and a 5% interest rate. And so that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Thanks, Kerry. That was, that was great. When I very first joined the select board, I went to the Department of Public Works, because I was the liaison, and I walked in, and there were tarps and all over the place. And I thought, oh, this is great. It's being painted, but it wasn't. It was leaking. I have a question. You mentioned that the priority, Chris Whalen had a different number one priority than Stephen Crane, right? So it seems to me that some of these requests have gone back years and years. Is that true, that these have been?
Yeah, so I, I think the fact that the town approved $150,000 for a feasibility study for public works in 2014 is telling. We've been talking about it at least since then.
So is it safe to say then that most of the tier-three capital has been spent on the schools? And that a lot of public works have been kind of put off? So is that safe?
So certainly, there's, there's been a, a lot of spending on schools, you know, in the last 10 years, the last 15 years. I don't have, I can't think of any major town project over $5 million for sure, at, at a single time recently.
I think the good news is, we don't have any other schools left. So one observation, I think, is that the, I think by design, the enterprise funds are excluded from this process. And yet, I think we do need to be aware that there are major capital projects potentially in the offing, and that that does affect the overall budgeting, or sorry, borrowing capacity of the town, potentially, right?
So the, the borrowing capacity of the town, the, the available borrowing capacity is significant. I can't tell you off the top of my head, but.
Well, without having impacts on credit ratings and the like.
Yeah, you, you might be surprised how, how much the state thinks that we could borrow.
Then I guess the, the second thing is, you talk about the infrastructure expenses, and, you know, it's an annualized amount. So it just seems to me that borrowing for that doesn't make sense. I mean, in that it's, it's kind of current expenses, and in that it's a run rate. And if you borrow, you're just putting off the day that you're gonna have to pay, and you're gonna continue to need to pay for future expenses when they come. So, but then, i- isn't there something from the federal infrastructure bill that passed that will help with some of this, in the short term at least?
We're, we're definitely hoping, and, and we're following the developments, the, the timetable for rolling out those programs. So I'm told is not lining up particularly well with the first year of this plan. But if there are any opportunities, we will absolutely be going after them.
Okay. And then when it comes to the public works facility, I, I keep thinking of the 2229 Main Street site, mainly because, you know, there's the bus depot there. It's a open site that could be developed, you know, without impacting current operations. And I know that it was ruled out in the past, but I just wonder, you know, is there a sort of fundamental reason that, that, that can't be pursued as a site? Because it always seems to me, it's so much easier to develop on a, on a greenfield site, which is a rare thing in New England, than it is to redevelop on a site that's in use.
Yeah, I, I think some component of the study we're doing is going to have to look at alternative sites. I think that the potential issue with 2229 Main Street is just the timetable at which it becomes available. We have, these buildings are, are in tough shape. So we would have to understand, right, we would have to do something. The, the second is neither the current public works director nor the, the previous public works director really liked, liked the proximity or the lack of proximity of that site to where the work happens.
Yeah, I just think of the Kaiser Road facility as, you know, that site is having so much potential for so many other things that, you know. Okay, and then, well, I'll yield.
My name is Lynda Escobedo. Kerry, when you mentioned the timetable isn't lining up, I assume you were referring to the public works, not the middle school?
For the, for the federal grant programs, right, for, oh, for, yes, I was answering for public works.
And I know that a lot of work has been done in the last couple of years for quote "space mining" within our existing buildings. And I'm wondering to what degree that's taken the pressure off of the master plan as it was rolled out earlier.
Yeah, so the select board might remember that this plan also contemplated significant renovations at the townhouse. And there were, there were multiple scenarios. And so we have space mined for a fraction of, of what was presented in here. That, I think that was the best opportunity. We've, we've done, over at 141 Kaiser Road, we've made some improvements. I think we still have some opportunity to move some offices over to 55 Church Street, which is a beautiful building, and I, I think it's underutilized right now. But I think probably the townhouse space mining was the biggest deduct to, to this, the cost presented in this report.
And then clearly, we've got competing demands, and clearly, we've got a lot of deferred issues here. And degree to which the senior management staff are falling in line with the priorities as they're, you know, identified. You know, is that working? I guess I would.
So we, yeah, I, I would, yes, I would say it's working. It, it's hard, because both of our, both of our priority one projects are very much needed. And if money was no object, we would be trying to advance both of them at, at the same time. But I think public works is slightly more needed than public safety at this time. Mary, the, the tarps are still up, maybe in different locations. So, and, and the fact that we have the, just all of that equipment that's outside, exposed to elements, and, and the site is not secured.
Thank you.
So I guess one thing that the schools maybe do have on the table here, and I don't know if it will end up qualifying as another tier-one project, but if you think about the scope of the budget changes for the middle school, which I don't think are represented, you know, we, we don't know what the number ultimately will be, but, you know, it could be up to $10 million, in which case it would have an impact, you know, on this last page set of estimates. So even though it's not a new project, that, you know, budgetary increases on an existing project, I think also should be accounted for.
So I was gonna ask that question. Are the numbers plugged in there, the last town meeting numbers? Okay.
Except for that, I think what you've done, though, is you have increased the interest rate assumption.
Yes.
So, so that part is accounted for, and that's about half the difference, I think, or at least what we expect will be about half the difference.
Can we put in the potential? Because we're gonna know the warrant number, yeah.
Well, by the time we get through this process, we'll have a much better number.
Right, but we have a 45-day comment period, and during that period, we would probably be pretty sure of that new number, right?
We, we could have a sort of assumption for phase three.
Right.
Anybody want hazard a guess? Go ahead, have a poll.
Well, you presented, you presented a pincom number, or where was I? Somewhere.
The bill, all I can say is the billing committee's voted 115. I know we're gonna revisit that Thursday. There's no definitive number right now.
I mean, I think 115 is kind of a working maximum. So you could put that in, but, you know, it will have an impact, a big impact. And it is effectively a tier one, you know, at that rate, because 11 points something, 11 points. Or tier, sorry, tier three.
I know.
You think it sounds like the Big Sahuna. Not really.
So change that. Yeah, yeah. No, that was a 10-year committee matter. We're not going back to change that. So that was my next question. I don't think we have a little spot on the webpage for the capital planning, for the capital plan, the 10-year capital plan.
Okay, what you mean, we need a link.
And if we could put, did the, the select board actually adopt their own? Did you just adopt wholesale the recommendations, or did you?
I believe we just adopted the plan last year.
Okay, so maybe we could post that as well. We have a little spot there to memorialize this. So it's just, so it can be remembered year to year. Yeah, and then we could send out just a blast to say we're opening up. Say we're opening up the comments period, that would be, I think, great. Thank you.
With um, with the middle school of tax impact of over a thousand dollars, very likely. On the average tax bill, do we have any room in our capital budget for any of these other projects?
I guess it's a matter of opinion. Um, what I, what I would say is we do have the elementary school debt falling off in twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight. And I think we up, we had targeted that as maybe a potential opportunity for for the next project. But we definitely have have needs that are going to have to be addressed somehow in, well, twenty six is not too too far off. But in, we have immediate needs, we have, uh, we are fixing the roof at one thirty three Kai's Road. That was, that's a current year capital project, so that will help. And and I think we're hoping to address some of the security issues over there. But yeah, it's really, I guess, a matter of opinion whether or not we have, we have room. Because these are, the tier three, the assumption is it's all exempt debt, so it's all specifically authorized at town meeting at the ballot. So it it's really what the community would like to see.
The the one silver lining of inflation is it deflates the effective value of your debt. You know, you can inflate away debt.
That's gonna be reflected in your interest rate.
If for a future, yeah, for people that are borrowing.
Does anyone else have questions on our?
There's some parallels here with the with the middle school, because I think what you're faced with is a timing question for certain town facilities. That are gonna uh, put into question how much you do in order to patch and remediate and hold on to those properties. So the sooner, sooner we have some conviction about possible timetables, the more you can be, uh, what, careful about the temporary, if you will, spending.
Right.
Hang on to facilities that are someday gonna be be renovated or or dropped.
Yeah, the beauty of this process.
Yeah. Uh, just a question, uh, looking at this ju- just from a townwide perspective. We have town offices distributed throughout the town now, much more so than we did even a decade ago, I'm correct. If you could pull back and consolidate, what what are your outliers that you'd like to most pull back? I mean, and for example, we have Church Street, which is gorgeous, um, we have, uh, what, the uh, property at Sleepy Hollow. Curious if there are pro- uh, departments you'd pull in and consolidate if you could.
Yeah, so we, we do really like um, Harvey Wheeler and fifty five Church Street. That's a nice complex for our human services offices. So I think, I think we would be happy to keep them there, but if we had the opportunity to have at least the offices that are in the townhouse. Over at Court Lane, the assessor's office and planning and land management, if if we could have them together. I guess along with facilities, that would be great. Um, I I've worked in communities where you've even had public works together. And anytime you can bring people together, it it makes, it makes things easier. Uh, but that's, it's not really possible with the space that we have.
I wonder about this facility.
Yeah, we're working on it, we're gonna chip away at it mostly through the town manager allocation that we get annually. Um, it needs work and we're, 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 we're on it in trying not to come to you with an ask. So so far, we're on track for that.
And and there's no particular formula or magic to that number that I'm aware of, it's simply one that we make work each year.
Yeah, this building is the priority within the nine hundred thousand of the allocation that we usually work within. Um, so we could give you updates on that, but we're strategizing that.
A quick comment, um, we're talking about, um, you know, numbers and buildings and assets and hard assets. And I know that the schools do a really good job when you're talking about, uh, building schools, about recognizing the importance of students and teachers and parents. And I think that we should also use that when we're talking about the public, the town buildings. Because we're, we're also talking about people who work for the town should have working conditions. And the people who live in town depend upon those services, so it's kind of the same thing. So let's keep the people in mind when we're, when we're thinking of things like this.
And all those departments, you've spoken about service us too, you know, DPW, police, fire, like, all those are really important supports for us, so you're completely right. I guess that's why we're here, yeah.
Okay, then, if we don't have any comments here, I I assume we should just have a moment for public comment.
Oh, sure.
So if there's anyone in the room that would like to make a public comment, if you could come and identify yourself and your address. Um, otherwise, if you're on Zoom, and I don't know if I have the capability of seeing. Okay, if there is anyone that they could, yeah, identify themselves and make their comment. Anybody?
Nothing.
Okay.
Yes, um, hi, my name is Akia Obas, a Boston parent. And I come to the committee today, um, sad that I have to address the.
Yeah, Akia, this is not the school committee meeting yet.
This is the.
We haven't adjourned a previous meeting.
Okay.
Almost there.
Yeah.
Give us a minute.
Yeah, this is the capital planning forum for the town.
Which we can probably move to.
Okay, so then, yes, uh, I will adjourn.
All right.
The select board.
And we all stay in session, Concord Public.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you, Carrie. We're not quite ready, that's okay. Nope, totally fine. You're ready. Yes.
No problem.
Hey, welcome, everybody, I would like to call to order the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee. And we're gonna call to order by roll call vote, because we do have a member on Zoom. Anderson present.
Present.
Morano present.
Brady present.
Rankin present.
Whit present.
Wilson present.
All right, thank you for joining us. All right, we are gonna start tonight with our student update, and let's see, I see Harry's here, and I thought it says Aria, there's Aria. Oh, and Felicity, perfect, go right ahead.
All right, um, will I just share my screen really quickly? Perfect, okay, so we have like a bit of a quicker update this week, but I think there's still a few things that are worth touching on. The first of which are the homework free weekends, so our first one of the year was this past weekend with Kicks for Cancer and Mighty Moose. Um, and I think it's a really great way to kind of make the weekend more of an actual reset and to kind of recharge for the year ahead. So I think that was great, especially with all the stuff that's happening over the weekend, and I think it's something that we should definitely try and continue with in the future. And maybe something that we could consider making more frequent.
Yeah, um, Student Senate also held the Activities Fair last Friday on the twenty third. Um, which was when a lot of clubs, clubs got to set up tables around the lobby in CAF during lunch blocks. And I saw a lot of students walking around and exploring these, all of these um, club tables. And there was a lot of conversation and interaction, so that was really successful. There are like so many interesting clubs in the school that students haven't heard of. And it was like a good opportunity for people to learn about them and discover something um, new, basically. Um, yeah, and also I was able to attend the MASC um, training. On Saturday, the seventeenth, and it was really nice to connect with other student reps from across the state. And learn some of the basics about being an effective student rep, since I'm new this year. Um, so that was, that was really helpful, and it was also inspiring just to be able to hear about what other school committees are doing. And how student reps are doing their best to like interact and use their voices within that setting. Because this is really a great opportunity for us all to be here, yeah.
Uh, we had a special assembly on Friday about kindness and how we should treat other people. Uh, we've, I felt, I feel like a lot of us found it really interesting, especially the analogies he used, we found it really entertaining. He kept us engaged and it was really, a really interesting experience.
Yeah, um, also, obviously, this past weekend, as I'm sure you're well aware of, was Kicks for Cancer and Mighty Moose. And then also the class government pink dance, I think it was really cool to kind of see like the community get together like that. I mean, I was thinking I went to Kicks for Cancer, and like, I feel like even in past years, the student section had never really been that big, like last year I went. And I would say wasn't nearly as many kids, so it's kind of cool, that sense of community, because it's one of the few times where really the entire school is together almost. And you can kind of see everyone together in this like one kind of cohesive group, so I thought that was sort of cool. And then also Green Team, which is a club here at CCHS, did composting at Kicks for Cancer, which I thought was sort of an interesting way to kind of. Get involved in the community a little bit for Green Team, and then also, obviously, it's very important, because it made the whole event a little bit more sustainable.
Uh, we also had the Pink Dance, which was, uh, which was right after the Tackles for Cancer game. Um, we lost, but it was still a really fun event.
Um, yeah, and then just like one other point to touch on, I think the academic load, especially for juniors, has been going up a little bit as the school year gets underway. Which is to be expected, but it's definitely a little bit of a busy time right now with everything kind of ramping up. And I think the school year getting started like for real.
Uh, over the past few weeks, ma- many of the teachers and students have been like getting sick from non-COVID illnesses. Um, like my Spanish teacher, and I was out personally, and this week my science teacher's out. So I feel like there's a lot of, and I've also been seeing like a lot of uh, like signs on the doors where there's been like absences and a lot of teachers aren't here. I'm not really sure about the students, but I know there's a lot of teachers absent.
Yeah, and then just um, a couple of upcoming events, I can just talk super quickly about the ninth grade elections that are coming up. Um, so class government elections are this week, and then Student Senate sec- Student Senate elections will be the next week, so it'll be good to get some new voices in.
Um, yeah, and I think we mentioned this last time, but the CC Theater Fall Drama, which is called The Secret in the Wings. It's like a collection of Grimm's lesser known fairy tales, it's really, it's a really cool production. Um, the performances are in less than a month, October twentieth to twenty second, and all the publicity stuff, which I'm actually in charge of. Um, is gonna, we're gonna start putting up like all the posters and selling tickets really soon. So we had like a really short rehearsal timeline, but I think we're really excited for the community to be able to see our work, yeah.
Yeah, um, and then just like one last point, this past student senate meeting, so last week we approved some new clubs for CCHS, which is very exciting. Um, we now have a like law journal, which is gonna be published over the internet, so that's kind of cool. And then also a new Asian affinity group, and then also this organization that is kind of working to set up the opportunity for CC students to tutor. Underprivileged kids through like Zoom and other online tools, so it'll be interesting to see what happens with that, and yeah, thank you so much.
Wow, you guys, I mean, really, you are exceptional, I feel like I know exactly what's happening at the high school right now, and I do have kids there, so I get it from them. But I definitely get more from you guys, so thank you for that, uh, we're excited about elections this week. I think the ninth grade is really happy about that, and I agree, Kix was just, it was an amazing weekend, we'll talk a little bit more about that after. But does anyone have any questions for our student reps? No? Okay, well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Great, and I think you guys should, you know, be the presenters at the next MASC student rep conference, because you guys have definitely taken this to a new level, so thank you. All right. Right now, we are on to a public comment, and just as a reminder, if you have a public comment to make. If you're in the room, you can come up to microphone, if you are on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature, you will have three minutes, please state your name. And just as a reminder, this is a meeting in the public and not with the public, so we will not be commenting on any comments made. So I don't see anyone in the room who has a public comment, so if you have a comment to make, you can just unblock your camera or raise your hands, we can recognize you. Akia.
Everyone. This is, my name is Akia. Can folks hear me and see me?
Yeah.
Yes.
We got you.
Awesome, um, you know, tonight I am addressing the committee as a concerned parent. It was brought to my attention that there was an incident that occurred at CMS either last week or prior to that. Where a black student was called a monkey. Um, I do not have a child that is in CMS, um, but I am very concerned about that behavior. Uh, and hearing stories like that, um, I am a second year parent, and this is another, yet another story that I have heard. Uh, so I would love to understand what is the plan to address this behavior long term. Um, I know that there was some uh, emails that were sent to parents in the assembly. But broader transparency is needed, because when we send our kids to Concord, we're making a commitment to Concord Public School. Long term, and so as an elementary parent, I'm asking myself, do I send my kid to middle school? Where it appears that there is a systemic issue, uh, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Akia. Hey, do we have any other public comments tonight? Looks like we have somebody else with an unblocked screen, just wave at me if you'd like to make a public comment. Okay. I don't see any, did you see any? No, okay, thank you. All right, on to um, our recognitions, and today I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Hunter. I think the committee got um, an email earlier with a video that was shared by Andrew, so Dr. Hunter, I will turn over recognitions to you. Yes, and I'm gonna just briefly introduce Mr. Naitmichus here with a number of teachers and students. We wanted to get a chance to share out with you the work on the calculus project, we're beginning year two at the middle and high schools. And taking on this um, program, and we thought it would be great for you to hear from teachers and kids who are participating, how it's going. And give you a status update, so we know you've heard a lot about it, we wanna put some faces and and actions to it. So Andrew, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hunter, good evening, everyone, my name is Andrew Nimitz, I'm the Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging. And this evening I am joined by our three calculus. And this evening, I am joined by our three Calculus Project teachers, uh, Ms. Rayco, Ms. Callahan, and Ms. Cohane. We are also joined by, uh, a handful of our students, a couple of our 10th, uh, 9th and 10th graders. Uh, we have Zariah Alves, you can wave. We have Emmy Taylor, Tiana Felix, and did I miss anyone? Let me scan the other pages. I think that is...
Um, Olivia and Alexia are on.
Olivia, all right, the two twins, Olivia and Alexia Greenis. There you are.
And also Sophia Arif.
And Sophia Arif, all right, wonderful. So just a little brief overview of the Calculus Project. Um, Concord Public Schools and Concord-Carlisle, um, is a participate-in district in the Calculus Project. And, uh, we have a mission, our mission is to use research, uh, research-supported strategies to increase the representation and success of students of color and economically disadvantaged, uh, students in advanced mathematics. In the spring of 2020, we partnered with Dr. Adrian Mims, who is the founder of the Calculus Project, uh, to implement this program in our district. And so today, you know, our Calculus Project teachers and our students will sort of give you all, um, a brief overview of what it's been like for them, uh, to be part of this program. Um, if you want to learn more about the Calculus Project, uh, feel free to either email me or you can visit our, our district website. And under the DEIB tab, uh, there is a section, uh, that is dedicated to the Calculus Project. So I'll turn it over to our teachers, uh, Ms. Rayco, Ms. Callahan, and Ms. Cohane. Please take it away. Thank you.
Uh, well, thank you for having us. My name is Kristin Callahan. I'm an eighth-grade math teacher at CMS. Um, I'm here to just tell you a little bit about what we do with the students at CMS. Um, we support students who participate in the Calculus Project in math class. And we also have an enrichment that happens three out of the six-day cycle. Um, in that time, we're generally working with students to build skill and competence that surrounds math. Um, it's clear that knowledge is power, and we're giving students this power by, um, pre-teaching and re-teaching and practicing and targeting skills and developing understanding and also having fun with games and just being with each other.
All right, I'm gonna jump in. I'm, uh, Rayco Funaki, and Kristin and I work at the middle school closely together. And I would just add to that, that, um, what we get with that extra time is kind of magical, and the magic really happens in the relationships between the kids, the math, and their teachers. And I think what we do is create a community with our kids, and it's so good to see your faces, um, just, that's a safe spot. So it's a safe place for them to play with math ideas, gain confidence, deepen their understanding, so that when they then come to class the next day, they're powerhouses. They are, they are ready, they are confident, and, you know, it just changes their perspective on themselves and how they feel about math. Ashley?
Um, hi, I'm Ashley Cohane. Um, I am a math teacher at the high school. Um, and so I have the opportunity to work with these students once they come to the high school and then support them over the course of their entire high school career. And something I love is that as we were talking about doing this tonight, um, so many of the students were just so excited to have an opportunity to see their middle school teachers. And I think it really speaks to the power of this program and the connections that are made. Um, I have many things I could say, I mean, just sort of key, I meet with the students, um, two times a week and really building that sense of community. But I want to give them a chance to share with you, um, what their experience has been and some highlights through the program. So maybe I'll just kind of call out to you and then you guys can share, um, as we talked earlier. So, Zariah, go for it.
Hi, I'm Zariah. I'm a 10th grader. Uh, one of the biggest highlights of the Calculus Project is definitely the, the summer program. During the summer, we go to Boston, the Boston University campus, and we take classes to better our math understanding and get us ready for the next, for the next year. Uh, we do activities, we do, uh, assignments, and we are given lunch. And we are able to go to the BU campus cafeteria food hall thing. And let me tell you, the, the, the ice cream is great. Um, we were able to take a field trip to Harvard Medical School, and I heard some kids got to see a dissection. Me personally, I didn't get to see it, but, uh, we looked at cells, but it was still, it was still fun. Um, and I feel like it's a really good opportunity to meet other kids who also do the Calculus Project in other schools. And it's overall a really fun experience and 10 out of 10, would recommend.
Awesome. Thank you, Zariah. Um, Sophia, how about you?
Um, so something I really like about the Calculus Project is like the community, like everyone is so nice, and I've made so many friends. And also, like, you learn to work with other kids, like, really well. Like, I know that, um, I've learned like so many different methods and like, like different learning styles from other kids, just because you always like get that opportunity to work with other people. And it also just helps me get prepared for class, and I'm more confident in like my math because I get a head start or I get to ask questions that I didn't get to ask in class. And yeah.
Thank you. Um, Olivia and Alexia, if you want to jump in from the back, you're allowed to, too.
Um, what I like about the Calculus Project is how, um, it's a good way to get extra help on math during the day instead of like having to worry about staying, like finding time before school or after school. And, um, I like how, like, it's like a different teacher from your math teacher. So like you get to see different perspectives on how to solve other problems. And also like how, um, you could like build a relationship with your math teacher and stuff. It's a good way to build a relationship. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, Emmy, how about you?
Hi, I'm Emmy Taylor, um, and I am a ninth grader. Um, but what I also like about the fact that like we get those days during the week is that like, personally, for me, I get to be like, while I'm doing my math homework, I can section off the questions that I have or like I can say like, oh, I have to do this and this. But I am able to ask those questions instead of waiting till my math class. Um, because I actually have Calculus Project right before I have math, um, which is nice, but I can, I'm able to like organize my life a little bit and just be like, okay, I can ask these questions that I know I'll be able to get these answered. So, um, it helps me prepare for my math class.
Awesome. Thank you. And Tiana, how about you?
I agree with Emmy. It really helps me prepare for class. And even if I'm just like taking a test in math, Ms. Cohane will help me like know what we're gonna do in class. So it helps me feel like I'm ahead and more confident when I'm in class and doing work. So it's really helped me.
Awesome. Great. Um, so just hearing, I think, from the students about their experiences and the power of this. Uh, I know for me, also just reinforces what an amazing thing this is, an opportunity, um, and I love being a part of it. Um, I don't know if we have time for any sort of questions or sort of what the protocol is for this. Um, but if anyone else wants to jump in, or Rayco, or Kristin, if you have anything else to share.
Very good. Well, I have to say, I think this is the first time we've seen, um, our students this year. Besides our wonderful student reps, Zariah, that is especially for you, and I think Felicity's still on. But it's great to hear your perspective on how you're interacting with math and the fact that you said, I love summer math. I mean, that's amazing. I, you know, you're, I'm sure your math teachers love that, too, that you love summer math. So I'll turn it to our committee to see if anyone has any questions, comments. Go ahead, Alexa.
One of the things that I noticed when you guys, all of you, students and teachers alike are talking, we're talking about sort of two things here. We're talking about a DEIB initiative that also helps with student success. And you guys probably won't stay on for what are our long, sometimes boring meetings. But what's really interesting is, as we are coming together as a committee to try to talk about and define what our two, like strategic priorities are for kids, they are like the redefining of student success and well-being and DEIB. So the fact that this speaks to all of that, I, I hope indicates that as a district and a community, we're kind of aligned on where we want to go and be. And I just think that this project is such a testament to that. And the fact that the reviews are good and the kids, um, feel really good about their engagement, to me, is a really strong start to this program that I hope continues to be a big part of our middle school and high school programs. So thank you, guys. This is great.
Before they go, I just want to shout out, this was a vision. Kristin, when was that? We're, I don't know, COVID has warped my time.
In Brooklyn, and I was at...
Yeah. And then we, you know, start visioning this as a leadership team, Kristin, Andrew, Justin Cameron, Mike Mestula, like, these are the amazing folks implementing the vision that got formed a few, couple of years ago in the middle of COVID, um, with a determination that this is kind of what you hope it's gonna turn into. And to see it coming to life is just really, really exciting.
It's wonderful to see it in process, and I'm on, have been on the receiving end where my former students who were involved in the Calculus Project are now graduated, graduated from college, turned into math teachers, engineers, and you see it coming to fruition. So...
Good luck, you guys. You're all gonna be like math teachers and engineers. I just want you to know that.
Really great, really great work. And if you haven't seen the video yet, and we, we probably should link it at some point to something, but the video was excellent. Um, and it, I love seeing our teachers and our students, and some of you I know through my own kids. And it was just hearing your voice and how much you love math and how much your math teachers love teaching you. It, it was really great to see. So if you haven't seen it yet, you guys definitely watch it. It's worth it.
We can, we'll push that out, too, so the community has access to it.
So this program sounds amazing. I just have a couple of questions. Um, as, as far as the, are there any requirements? I, I see that the flyer said like, um, children of color and economical, economically disadvantaged. Is that a requirement to be in the Calculus Project?
Andrew, do you mind elaborating on that a little bit?
So the question I'm hearing is, what is a criteria?
Yes, is it either or, or is it both?
Say that.
Is it either or, or is it both? Do you have to be a person of student of color and economically disadvantaged, or?
Either or.
Either or. Yeah, either or. And that criteria is set by the, um, by the founder, Dr. Adrian Mims.
And Andrew, it starts in seventh grade. Are we seventh graders or eighth graders?
Yeah, now we have expanded the program to start, uh, in seventh grade. And it's sort of, um, well, the hope is to expand to seventh grade. Um, and so, but this year, we are still aligned with, with the expectation of the program to begin in eighth. But the goal is to align it with what other districts have, which is to have the program start in seventh grade.
If, if I'm correct, the program was the beneficiary of a very generous community grant, which I think we can acknowledge again, getting us to year two with a successful year one. Um, uh, I, I want to say to our students, not only thank you for joining us tonight, but especially thank you for inspiring each other and inspiring your teachers. It's very obvious you're doing that. So congratulations. Thank you. You, you have great teachers and they deserve your inspiration.
I'd just like to add.
No, go ahead.
Uh, my daughter, Deila, uh, took part in the program this summer. She had a great time. Uh, she made tons of friends. And, you know, like I said to her, um, you guys have to come out and recruit more for the program. You guys are the ambassadors for the program. And the way you sell the program is the way the program continues to thrive. And of course, the, the city and town will be able to fund it for the next, um, group of students. So great job this summer. Keep up the good work. And let's see if we can increase those enrollments for next year.
Well said.
Does it end in the ninth grade, or is it, does it go on to 10th grade? Just seventh or?
Follows them now through the inquiry all the way through Calculus in senior year.
Oh, great. Okay, okay. Um, well, I just wanted to say, um, that was my one question, but I just thank you so much, I think, um, to the teachers who are doing this incredible work. And mostly honestly, to the students, I heard things not just about math, but community and friendships and learning from one another. Like what incredible life skills that you're learning in this that extend beyond just math. So thanks for sharing your experience with us. And, um, yeah, cheers to getting more kids to, to participate.
Thank you. Thank you all, and you are welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. But we also understand if you would like to sign off, too. That's totally fine. I, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, everybody.
All right. That was great. So thank you for bringing us that recognition so early on and, and really seeing our kids again right up front. Because of course, you mentioned that, so thank you.
Thank everyone who made that happen.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, we have the minutes to approve, and we're gonna do these separately. Because I think we have some comments on the workshop minutes. So, um, I would propose, uh, that we, let's say, I would entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from September 6th.
So moved.
Any discussion? Okay, and we need to roll call this because Sarah is on Zoom. So roll call, please.
Anderson, I for both.
Who's I for both?
Morano, I for both.
Randy, I for both.
Rankin, I for both, sorry.
Whit for region.
Wilson for region.
Okay, and then we have the workshop minutes from August 23rd. So I would entertain a motion to approve the workshop minutes from August 23rd.
So moved.
And do we have discussion on that?
We need a second.
Oh, sorry.
Sure.
Second. Now discussion.
I have some suggestions to add to the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, um, and I emailed them, too. Uh, in the, and the point for these is just that I think that going forward, looking back at the minutes of the workshop meetings in particular, I think it helps strengthen the school committee, um, so that we don't reinvent the wheel or so we know what conversations were, and, and so we have kind of a baseline. Um, so the things that I would propose to add are, um, after the, is that the third sentence? So after, um, Glenn talks about, he noted the positive relationship between the Administration School Committee and faculty. I would suggest adding that the committee, uh, was commended for its commitment to improving the onboarding process for new members. And that he noted that he and Doc, and Ms. Presser differ in opinion on how long it takes to get new members up and running. Ms. Presser thinks a few months, Mr. Kucher thinks a few years. I think that's just something that's nice to remind people of. And then the other note was the importance of sharing how a presentation relates to the strategic plan and moving the district forward. I'd suggest adding that Ms. Presser planned to share a presentation she made about guidelines for best practice in presentations and noted the need for presenters, administrators, and committee members to be conscientious about not speaking and budget jargon or ed speak, so discussions can be understood by all. And then my third one is that, just a clarification on that last sentence of the first paragraph that he stated the school committee needs to have a discussion around the balance. Instead of saying between the communities, I would just say of time and effort spent on Concord and regional issues.
Okay, so Sarah has three additions that she's proposing to the minutes. Do we have any discussion about that?
Uh, just as a matter of procedure, if we're in support of these, do we withdraw a motion and proceed with a new one as amended?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is it, sorry, is it possible to see these in writing or no?
It is. So I had gotten advice from Dorothy on this. So we really, this is part of the discussion. I can, um, share the screen, but she really encouraged us to do it publicly at our meeting.
Okay.
And so it's...
It's hard to...
I know.
I know, and I...
I didn't want to share it. Right, she emailed them to me, but then I didn't want any deliberation over the minutes. So it's three changes, and, um, I, I think we either vote on the minutes as is or we amend them. So, um, I will keep my motion on the table unless anyone would like to amend my motion.
Move to amend.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, so any discussion on this?
So your amendment is what?
To adopt the...
To adopt the language, to adopt the language that was, uh, was recommended to us.
Yeah, if I can screen share...
Yeah, if I can screenshot, I can put them up.
As a matter of procedure, we accept the amendment and then the main motion. Uh, how's this going to work?
Well, uh, this, this is kind of new territory, but this is exactly how we have to do it. So the amendment would be Sarah, do you want to screenshot your minutes?
I can, yeah.
Okay, that'd be great. And we won't spend a lot of time on this. So if you have a computer, just take a little look at that right now, if you can. So you know what you're voting on.
Can you all see that or should I make it?
I think a little larger would be helpful. So.
I'm looking on my computer.
Yeah.
That okay?
Much.
Thank you. Perfect. And then her changes are in red and there's a strikeout at between the committee and the district.
Court, is your question, would we rescind the original motion and say, and would we put a new motion on the table to adopt the minutes as amended in our discussion?
We either need to vote on the amendments.
Right now.
Now.
Right now.
Now we're gonna.
Okay, on the motion. Perfect, right.
And my question is, do we have to then vote on the main motion?
Yes.
We do.
We do.
But the main motion then, it would then be implied that uh that it either incorporates these changes or we reject that main motion.
If the.
Right.
Yeah. Any discussion?
Well, I think we need to, I, I don't really understand the last edit, time of and effort spent on conquered and regional issues. It feels um like unnecessary. It's also, it doesn't include boss or Boston families between communities in the district.
Right, but that was a conversation about the meetings, about the, the balance of attention to, to, you know, of where, where we talked about that Concord was getting shortchanged by people, by the meetings, by the conquered meetings being when everybody was worn out after the regional meetings. And just being conscientious of not putting too much conquered stuff in, in the regional meeting.
It i- it is faithful to our actual conversation.
Right. So we are going to take a vote on the amendment and the amendment is to the motion on approving the minutes. And so if we're amending it, it would, then we're going to have to re-vote on the changes and withdraw. It sounds a little confusing, but we're going to vote on the amendment first by roll call vote.
You ready?
Are we ready?
So with all of these changes?
Yeah, to be clear, my, my, my motion then is to uh approve the amended uh of said minutes.
And if you vote no on that, well, we're going to go back to the other motion. Okay, so this is just on the amended minutes.
Do I stop sharing now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Anderson, I for both.
Booth, I for both.
Morano, I for both.
Rainy, I for both.
Frank and I for both.
Wait for region.
Wilson for region.
Okay, so I'm going to withdraw. Oh, I can't withdraw because I didn't make the motion. So we don't have to. The main motion.
Yeah.
So would I would just withdraw?
Then we have no motion.
So now we're going back to the main motion and we're going to roll call vote again.
Anderson, I for both on the motion and the amendment.
That's on the amended.
On the amended.
On the amended.
Mr. Booth.
Uh, I on the amended motion.
Morano, I on the amended motion for both.
Rainy, I for both.
Frank and I on the amended motion for both.
Would I for the region for both?
And Wilson, I on the amended motion for region.
I, I hate being because I just want to be clear about
What we're doing.
What I'm saying, so I'm not doing it wrong. I'm.
We just agreed.
We adopted the original minutes with Sarah's amendment.
And this is going to be our process if we have amendments to minutes. So just, this is it for the future. And I want to thank Erin for the minutes. I know that she's listening. I will send you these changes and you you, you're doing a great job in the minutes, Erin. So thank you. And we'll get the rest to you. All right. Correspondence.
We have no correspondence at Concord Public Schools this past two weeks.
And the past two weeks, we had two at the region. One was on some concerns about um some issues or efforts D I, D E I B. And the other one was additional, an additional comment about signage at the CCHS campus. And you all should have received that. All right, and now on to our chairs and liaisons report.
Um, I'll, I'll start with the chairs report. Um, I, I thought because we've been, we've, this year has been from my perspective, feels like it's really ramping up. Um, so I started putting together some ideas for key highlights for everybody about some of the things that um the chairs have been up to. And then I realized, oh, this is a lot. Um, so I, I did send you all very late in the day a, a document that sort of has summarized some of the meetings we've had um in the past. It ended up being August and September because I thought some of the things were relevant. But some of the key highlights that I just um thought might be relevant to make are um that we have met with the superintendent to start our um sort of bird's eye view for the year. And then um about sort of the things that this committee might be interested in. Um, however, we've if that process has really just commenced because we want to approve our goals. Um, specifically our student centric goals around D E I B, student success and well being. Because I think that will better inform um the presentations uh that we're going to want to see throughout the year and, and, and the way we're going to schedule them. So we've just, we've broken that ice with the superintendent. Um, we've had a few meetings now with uh the finance committees at both Carlisle and Concord. Tracy's um and Sarah have uh met with Carlisle, Tracy and I have met with Concord. Um, this is mostly to discuss the um guidelines printing, planning process. So obviously every year, the finance committee will weigh in on what they believe um an appropriate budget increase for the different um schools, districts budgets are. Uh, so we've, we've again commenced that. Actually, and Lori, Dr. Hunter presented to the finance committee this past week, Thursday.
Yes.
Bob and I.
And Bob, yes. So they um, they kicked off um some of those conversations. And then finally, um because as we've been working on our professional practice goals, it seemed like communication specifically, specifically external communications, how um you know, that, that we've started talking about with increasing our subscriber base and better engaging with the community. Um, we were able to meet with Tom Lucy to discuss some proactive ideas. We again haven't approved formally that goal, but I anticipate that we're going to improve it. So um, we did have a kickoff meeting with him to talk about, again, mostly just better ways for him and us collaboratively to leverage some new infrastructure from a media standpoint that's coming out in some of the existing structures. So um, I'll turn it over to Tracy for her piece.
Okay, so I get to talk to you about kicks for cancer and mighty moose, which was absolutely amazing. I know that a bunch of you were there. I, I did see some, some of you there this weekend. So that was great. And I'm actually going to read you from one of the organizers of kicks for cancer, just a little update to give you a flavor of that. Um, the kids were amazing this weekend. Thank you to the schools and the community for all their support. Seeing all the kids in town wearing their pink on Friday and then coming to kicks and mighty moose was amazing. I'm sorry, we're still getting our money in the door. So we, we can't report to you as to how much money's been raised yet. But this year they did add football, which was tackles for cancer. And cheer was also involved in that ultimate frisbee, which was flicks for cancer. Volleyball was digs for cancer, field hockey sticks for cancer. Um, so it was really, it really involved a lot of the community. Um, I think that we can safely say this is a very successful year and we believe it was our largest attendance ever. And the fundraising numbers look really good so far. The highlights this year are the addition of all the sports. And the paint dance, which was run completely by the students was back. And the last time that we had a paint dance was in twenty nineteen. So they did end up moving it outside, but it was just great to have another dance at CCHS. Um, they also had great press coverage from channels four, five and seven. And what I'll do is when I get those, I'll push them out to all of you. And finally, our honoring Peter Nickel was extremely important and special for us. Our green effort to compost and recycle at kicks was inspired by Peter and his love of the environment and his efforts in these areas. This will continue each year in his honor. And a huge thank you to the principals and the schools, Thoreau, Alcott, Willard, CMS and the Carlisle School. And for the pink dance and having a pink day on Friday. In addition to CCHS, the uniting of our community in this way for a great cause, which also models giving back for our kids to see. Um, and please thank Lori for coming this year. It was so good to see everyone there. So I think that I could definitely say it was a successful weekend. The energy on the campus was amazing. It's so important that our facilities continue to you know, look like they do. They were lively. And we actually didn't have any parking issues. I actually worked on parking. It was very exciting. So not that there weren't any issues, but there was some creative parking, maybe.
Since we let you park wherever you wanted to.
Yeah, so, but it, it was really great. So um, and I should, for anyone who doesn't know, um, kicks for cancer was started originally for Steve Wells, who's a teacher at high school. His mother had passed away. So it always honors Steve. The mighty moose honors Jenna Swaim. And Peter Nickel will continue to be honored at the event every year. So.
I just add, I wasn't going to talk, but I can't help it. Um, the addition of pushing it out to the elementary schools this year on Friday as pink day. That was new. And it just gave this district wide feel like it's inspired me to think we should do a few other thematic days pre K to twenty two. And it just brought us all together, even when we weren't together. Um, so really, what a fantastic few days. It really was. So. And it was my pleasure to go. Usually my daughter's college parents weekend conflicted, but she graduated. So this year I could come and I'm so glad.
Parents weekend too, by the way.
Well, that was a year late for me.
A year too late for you, but yeah, it was really.
It was, it was ex- exception.
Yeah. And, and mighty moves, I know, I, their final numbers aren't in either, but preliminary estimates have them well, well um over almost to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the fact that our community and our campus is a part of that in such an integral way is, is pretty exceptional. So I commend the community on that.
Definitely.
All the way around.
Definitely. And then the only other thing that I had to report was um Lori and I are actually, we're going to Carlisle to meet with their new town administrator.
Correct.
Town manager, town administrator on Friday. And you also, we attended the PTGPA president's meeting this month too.
Yeah.
Did I miss that?
Giant meetings.
Yeah, so that's all we had for this month. And now I will pass it on to the rest of you for anyone that has a report. And you know, we'll start with you, Sarah, because you're on Zoom. Makes it easier.
Okay, hi. Uh, so um, I attended the adult and continuing ed um meeting last week and I'm just here to say that, I mean, things are up and running, at full steam ahead. Um, they keep adding driver's ed sessions and just word of advice that if you need some of those prime time sessions um right after school, get in early because those are the ones that fill up fast. Um, but they're well staffed. They're, you know, always interested in potential drivers. Um, because just that maximize the timings and opportunities for students is great. Um, let's see, um, the uh musical, the IMSCC is mostly returning to in-person lessons right now. Armchair travel is almost fully organized for the year. They have one or two um slots in the late spring, if anybody is interested or knows anyone who has exciting travel to share. Um, but really they've got a, a lot of wonderful people ready to, to talk and present. Um, the League of Women Voters um and the Adult and Continuing Ed are organizing a DEI um seminar series that's for se- uh four sessions. And there's been a lot of information about that going out. Uh, there's the, can we talk about refugee resettlement happening? And then the big thing this year, the big change is assuming in the um Center for Parents and Teachers into the Adult and Continuing Ed Program. And so they're starting it with uh Sarah Ward, who is a well-known executive functioning expert um who I think has presented before in the area. And she is going to have two different sessions um about executive functioning for, one for elementary and one for middle and high school students. Um, and they're growing their ELL programming. And basically, I mean, they're just really, really busy and um very excited about all the offerings and, and all of the, the signups and the registrations and everything is healthy and good. And then the second quick update is the Carlisle Castle was completed.
Oh, good. Yeah. And are they still looking to get rid of some of the wood? Is that like the next part is getting rid of everything else? Or are they ready?
So there, uh, so I'm not in town this week, but um they are returning everyone's tools. They're organizing, I think. So they're, they I don't know what there is leftover of materials that they're giving away. The big thing is to get everybody's tools back to them right now because they still.
That's amazing.
Use the playground until the tent and the SARS go away.
Yeah, so the playground's not open yet, right?
Playground was open only for a brief time on Sunday for anyone who worked on it, their families. Um, and there's a little punch list of things to finish up. Um, but I think that they're um um, I think that they're basically. I don't, I don't know what the timing is for, because there's some, some inspections and things like that that have to happen. Um, okay. But it looks spectacular.
Okay. And did you have any other boards that you? No, you don't have.
No, no, you talked about meeting with the FinComs. No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, Sharon, you didn't, you didn't have anything for us this week. No. Okay, Carrie, nope.
Court. Nothing for region.
Nothing. And nothing on select board or anything like that. We don't have anything. Well, they were here with.
Come under Concord.
Okay, okay. Do you have anything? No. Cynthia.
Nope. Are you gonna talk about FinCom?
Um, well, do you have anything on the D E I?
They're meeting tonight.
They're meeting tonight, but like from the summer, just like a quick.
They're really rebooting, to be honest.
Okay.
Um, they're trying to align with strategic plan in the town. They have new chairs. Um, so I, I would be very interested to see what they're saying tonight because they went to set goals and um, so you know, they're really trying to install an infrastructure in the committee. So I would expect they're, I hope that they're recording it tonight and watch it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll just share, since we're talking about it, Andrew did meet with, I think, the chairs. Um, and started to figure our relationship with them. And he's invited them to a seat on his what the committees, I can't remember. He's named the committee steering committee for his strategic plan.
Okay, and.
Along with a couple of other groups.
I think it's Ha and Josh Lee.
Josh Lee, okay. Okay. Okay, and any, we have nothing else, right?
I'd like to add something.
Go right ahead.
It might be something new, but the Meckel families uh met last week, uh last Saturday, and they discussed several things that they're looking forward to bring um to the school district to increase participation from the parent group. So that's something that they're working on. And um, any updates I'll bring back for the next.
Great. Okay, so you go to all those meetings?
Yes.
Perfect. You, you're officially the liaison then if you go to all the meetings. You just earned yourself another job. Uh, thank you. All right. Um, and then the only other thing I had, I was on the CCTA D E I B Hiring Committee last year. I've been invited to join them again and their meetings are gonna what? Oh, I'm so sorry. The Concord Carlisle Teachers Association uh Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Hiring Committee. Sorry about that. I know, it just comes off like that. Um, so I will be joining them again this year. And I think they're looking to meet in the second week in October, around there.
Trying to find the date.
And it was a, it was actually a really great group last year. And you know, we wanted, we wanted the, to just keep going and then summer came. So we're going to step back in, in October. And I think that's all I had. Oh, the, oh, one other thing was the Strategic Planning Committee. So I've heard from some people. We need to make a plan for that later in the meeting. So just keep that in the back of your head if you're able to join that committee or not. Um, okay.
Tracy, I just thought of one thing.
Yep.
Um, I don't know if this is called under chairs, but the policy committee is having our first meeting next Wednesday.
Oh, perfect. Yes. Next Wednesday at twelve thirty and here in person.
Yep.
Okay.
And so the meeting will not be recorded.
Uh, I guess not. It's an in-person meeting. Have they historically been recording?
Yes, because we were doing it over Zoom.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like prior to Zoom.
Uh, I don't think so.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, can everybody make it?
Well, I've heard from a quorum and that's, I mean, I'd love for everybody to make it. Well, I've heard from a quorum and that's, I mean, I'd love for everybody to make it.
Um, can somebody record? I'll ask that if the recorded, the audio recording then. Instead of committee.
Okay, I'm happy to.
For the sake of Erin's need to track the discussions and all, she's always audio-recorded it. So we'll be sure we make that in a way you can access it.
Okay, that sounds great. So I think it's important that.
It's my birthday for the record. Wednesday?
I'll make another fan.
Was I part of the forum that's coming?
I think. Come now on your birthday.
No, 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 it's fine. I just didn't, I didn't recollect, but I.
And Cynthia, you said you put them?
Yep.
I don't think I heard from the others.
Okay.
Okay, sent you.
Okay, great.
Oh, Sharon.
Great.
Do you have what I expected? Are you, are you gonna have a heavy agenda or a light agenda?
So the agenda, um, at this point is gonna be, I included this in my email and I will, we will be sending out a formal agenda. Um, we'll be just reviewing the summer recommendations from MASC. So I don't believe it will be
Okay.
A lengthy conversation. These are pretty, like, this is sort of just get us going.
Okay, because there's only a couple there, I remember.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Well, we had some last week and then we had some in the spring.
So we haven't, yes, Cynthia flagged that for me. So I will look back. She said the fall. Exactly, yeah. We're looking at the summer now and then we'll go back to last year and see what's been done.
Right.
And then there've been some other ideas that came through, um, I know through the correspondence this week and also, um, so if anyone has thoughts or ideas, please feel free to send them to me. I'm creating a list of all the stuff to go through.
Right.
How often does this committee meet?
Four times a year. I can send you the dates. We, um, I'll send them to you right now, actually. It's on October. The first one is next Wednesday. Um, at twelve thirty. I have blocked two hours. I don't think it'll be two hours. So an hour, hour and a half, two thirty, uh, sorry, twelve thirty to one thirty or two o'clock. Um, I'll send you the dates.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We're gonna have some evening meetings, right? Didn't we decide that?
I think at this point, we're looking at all during the day, um, just as, it's a committee that has historically met during the day and we have a lot of evening commitments already. Um, but I'm open to discussion if people have strong feelings.
Perhaps we could make it a policy-specific decision if we think it's a high-interest item.
Oh, that's a great, like, based on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm open to that. Does anyone?
Well, and we're always, we're always bringing.
It always comes back to the committee anyway. This is an initial conversation that will.
In the evening, yeah.
But it, uh, as we've experienced in the past, it gets rather inefficient to bounce back and forth and back and forth. So try to craft something that you think is gonna, you know, that has, that has consensus, you know? Of course, it's gonna come here, but if it keeps going back and forth, you're gonna slow things down a lot, for sure.
Okay, well, we also have Dorothy to consider, you know, her schedule.
Because she.
I just, I think all of our members being participate, that's all.
Right, right. And I think that, you know, initially we were thinking that we could participate through our, our meeting here when it comes as a second read. So, okay, so moving on to, we good?
Yep.
Okay. Um, Superintendent School Committee Relations. So as you will see later on tonight, we've been working on our protocols and our goals as a committee. We've done some work as a committee over these past few months with Rob Evans and with the MASC. And we are looking forward to giving you another update at our next meeting. So on to, um, electric buses. And I am going to turn this over to Alexa and invite Brian Folds up with us. Let me just grab him a chair.
So we are going to invite Mr. Brian Folds, um, to our discussion tonight. He is gonna be giving us a presentation on electric buses. If you don't know Brian, um, you're missing out. Brian is, um, the Chair currently of the CMLP. And if anyone around town has any interest whatsoever in our sustainability efforts, you certainly know Brian. Um, he is just an incredible force to be reckoned with, who really, um, puts his money where his heart is, I'll say, or his mouth where his heart is, I don't know. But in any event, um, you really have been, from a citizen perspective, really leading the charge. And we also appreciate and respect that. So, um, and I've, I've, you know, full disclosure, I've known Brian since our kids were together in, um, nursery school. So, um, we all go a little far back, maybe too far back for our liking. But, yeah.
Can I, how could, just to set us up, how can I best share slides?
So either we can have Erin pull them up. She has them. She's like this mysterious.
Or you can pull them up yourself, but it looks like you should go with that.
Because I didn't know how to enlarge it. So here we go. Yeah, um, so you can, how do I?
You'll have to ask her to flip it. So, yeah.
So this, uh, what I came here tonight to talk about is I did a paper for, um, uh, continuing egg class at Harvard, um, about greenhouse gas inventories. And I focused on pupil transportation within Concord. That's the CPS fleet and the CCHS fleet. Um, as well as all the supporting vehicles at the, the, the motor pool for the schools. And in, in doing that, uh, I looked at the buildings as well and did a full greenhouse gas inventory and calculated the impact of, of that operation, uh, from that department. And I looked at multiple years as well. So I went back to twenty seventeen when we first started utilizing the, the bus barn there where we, we now have our new depot, um, up until about uh, nine months of FY twenty-two. So I didn't, I, it was during FY twenty-two and I did this. So uh, we could complete a bit more later. I'm gonna go through the slides and then we can go back because this, this is quite a few and I know you guys are busy. So, um, Erin, if you could go to the next one. Uh, you can skip this. It's just something you already know. This is service area. Um, this is some of the vehicles that were, were looked at in the fleet. Uh, it goes everything from the electric buses to the old diesel buses to the tractors, to the, the plows and driver's egg cars. It's the entire motor pool. Um, you can go to the next one. And here's a, a shot of the two buildings that are operated there. So one is the bus barn in the upper right and the office building on, on the lower picture, off to the side is a satellite picture. And you can see the, the layout of the two properties, which is one is in Acton and one is in Concord. So two different electric, electricity providers. So we'll go to the next slide. So the methodology used was a lot of data collection. And, and I've got to thank a lot of the town staff, as well as the schools for all the data that was collected. Because I went through all the bills of everything related to this department, did sharing, verified that I wasn't duplicating. Uh, and then I figured out the, the major greenhouse gases, which is CO2, methane, and nitrous oxide, and applied their global warming potentials, um, using the, the, the correct default values. And then going through that, I organized it according to, uh, the greenhouse gas protocol. And then created a carbon reduction plan, uh, in the end. And I wanted to put on this slide a little talk about the scopes. Um, so within this protocol, things are organized into scope one, which is where you buy a fuel and you directly combust it. And then scope two, where someone else buys a fuel, combusts it and sends you a, an energy product. And then the third is, uh, the capital investments. So the things you buy, the services you have, the emissions related to bringing products to you. Uh, next slide. I'm going quickly here because I've got a lot of slides. Uh, this is, this is the important one because this is the one that rolls it up. And this department, um, emits in FY eighteen, you can see it emitted about, uh, sixteen hundred metric tons of CO2. Um, that is a lot of emissions. That's about, that's over a little less than a percent of our entire community. That's, that's how big it is. And you can see an orange there. That's the direct diesel that's burned by the fleet. Uh, and that's just the combustion of the diesel. The, um, I believe it's either the, I think it's the green is the production of that diesel, those emissions that happen in making that product. And then the brown, I believe, is the, uh, the production of the vehicle itself. So you can see that just working with diesel is where the majority of our impact and emissions is happening through this fleet. And you can see where, when operations in FY twenty and twenty-one due to the pandemic got reduced, well, so did the emissions from this department because we weren't utilizing them. Uh, but as we come out of the pandemic, you can see that we're, we're coming right back up to, uh, to those levels. So the next slide, please. One of the things in the bus barn is we saw an unusually large amount of fuel being used. Um, over sixty-five hundred gallons of diesel, uh, heating oil, uh, was used to heat that facility. And the, the people up there, the mechanics were noticing that the mezzanine was very warm, but on the floor was very cold. And the heaters were constantly running. It was because the ductwork was blowing into the ceiling, but it wasn't making it down to where the men were working. And where, or where the thermostats were trying to get the temperature to change in the building. Uh, the year be, the year before, uh, that fan that's in that picture there was installed. It's a stratification fan. And that, what that does is slowly spins and it just pushes the warm air physically down so that it actually gets to the floor. And it was interesting because I actually did see a reduction in the amount of gallons used to heat that facility. So that there was a, you know, a good ten to twenty percent savings in the amount of fuel consumed by that building. But because of fuel prices, we actually paid more during that same time for less fuel. It, it reduced the impact of that, the diesel price going up, but we still did experience more expense after the stratification ban, but less consumption. Uh, the next slide. Also, the property, the offices that were acquired in twenty sixteen, uh, we found that those, that it actually had heat pumps. Heat pumps are great things. They, they heat the building with electricity. They're very efficient at doing that. Uh, and I was really surprised to find out they are thirty-five years old. They were very old units. And because they were so old, they were before the Montreal Protocol. And that was when Freon, uh, refrigerant was banned globally because of depleting the ozone layer. That is still in those units. So I believe in your capital plan for last year, those units should have been replaced by now. And your staff knew how to handle it and make sure that that Freon didn't get released and it was recycled properly. So that was good news. So people knew what to do with it and, uh, and it avoided, uh, over a thousand metric tons of emissions just from the thirty-five pounds or so of, of Freon that was in there. It's a very, very potent greenhouse gas. Uh, next slide, please. So when we, when you think about purchasing a diesel bus, you should remember this, that the bus will emit twice its own weight in greenhouse gas emissions every year that it operates. That's how much the diesel emissions are affecting, um, uh, you know, our, our air and our, our climate change. So these buses weigh a lot and they do emit a lot because they get, their, their fuel efficiency is getting better, but better is going from, you know, five miles per gallon to, you know, seven or, or eight. Um, that's, so they are getting more efficient in using diesel, but they still emit quite a lot of emissions. And, and people think, well, you know, I put in this many gallons of diesel. How could it add up to such large weights when we think about greenhouse gas emissions? Because most people forget to add in the weight of oxygen in the combustion. And that's where most of it comes from. So if you have a, a six and a half gallon, uh, a six and a half pound gallon of gasoline and you combust it, you make twenty pounds of emissions. And that's because it's, it's, it's reacting with the air and combustion and creating those greenhouse gases. So, uh, going through this quickly to get to questions, but the next slide, please. So the, the good news here is electric school buses can be a real solution. Uh, Concord Light has done a lot of work in the last few years to decarbonize its electricity. So six, seven years ago, it was ninety-seven percent, uh, emitting electricity generation. We are now to ninety-eight percent non-emitting electricity. So we're, we're pretty much carbon-free. That allows us to buy an electric bus, which does have more greenhouse gases embedded in its production. But in, by year two, we are now emitting less greenhouse gases with that vehicle than we would have operating a diesel. And so these buses usually operate for, you know, ten years or so. So we would have great, uh, reductions in greenhouse gases through doing that. Uh, the next slide, please. And another value that electric buses bring, I mean, they're, they're, well, I'll get to the barriers in a second because it's not all rosy. Uh, but the electricity is less expensive. So you will see a reduction in the cost of fuel vehicles. And more importantly, that price is very stable. So whereas the price of gasoline can fluctuate up and down with markets and with global, uh, things going on, electricity can switch from using natural gas to using renewables, to using wood, to using whatever fuel is cheapest. So it makes the electricity price more stable. Uh, next slide, please. So here's, here's the, the, the problems with electric school buses. They're expensive. To purchase them, they're about, you know, three times more expensive. So if we spend a hundred thousand dollars on a diesel bus, an electric equivalent with that battery costs of a little over three hundred thousand. So the way that we get around that is through qualifying for as many of these incentives that are coming out as possible. Uh, for example, the EPA is giving two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per bus. Uh, the, the Concord Public Schools is put in for thirteen in the first round. Um, so we're not a priority community, but fingers crossed they get to us and we get picked in their rebate lottery. Uh, cold climate, uh, we live, you know, in a cold area. Uh, and in the very first electric bus, we put on a diesel heating unit. So it would burn diesel only about thirty gallons a month, um, to heat the cabin of the vehicle, not to push it down the road. We thought that that would be a good way to reduce the purchase price by avoiding buying more battery, uh, on the vehicle. Unfortunately, what we found was not pushing the vehicle meant that, that diesel heater was exempt from all the emissions regulations. And that there's pretty significant emissions when that auxiliary heater is running. Um, and so that's, that's not the way we want to go. Now, there are more buses out there. There are incentives to help us buy bigger battery buses, uh, which means that we can use that for heat pumps and heating the cabin with electricity and, and not have any diesel used on the vehicle at all. Um, then electric, the, uh, electric fueling infrastructure is expensive, but right now we have, uh, right now we have a diesel filling station at the depot. We would need to build chargers for all these vehicles. And we could do a vehicle-to-grid system, which can create, uh, revenue stream for this fleet based on working with Concord Light and avoiding costs at Concord Light. So that, I'll get to that later, but that needs to be, um, tested, run, show it can work and we can, we can go in that direction. Uh, then with manufacturers' service and support, making sure that any manufacturer that we're buying buses from can service these buses within New England. Uh, Bluebird's based out of Rhode Island and Lion is out in New York. Uh, but making sure that our, it's not up to our staff to keep, you know, every maintenance issue, every warranty need
Yeah.
covered and don't have to send the bus back to Canada to have it refit, which we did with the first one. Uh, the next slide, please. So we've always stated that we would like to do an eighty percent, uh, electric school bus fleet and a twenty percent diesel fleet. That's been the goal that we've set. And, you know, first step was to evaluate different drivetrains. That was done by committee back in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. Uh, it determined that electric was the way to go. It was many other things in that study, but trying to save time. Uh, twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen, we did the pilot with the first electric bus in the United States. So we were, as, as Chris Whalen said it, you know, I don't mind being the cutting edge, but I don't want to be the bleeding edge. And so I apologized. It's, it's, we were the bleeding edge. And, and we worked through it, but that was, that was the expectation at the time. When we buy buses now, we should not have that expectation. We expect a product that really works and it's refined. Uh, and we've been aggressively pursuing, uh, any available incentive to reduce that purchase price. So the Volkswagen Subment, we got one bus there. We've been ready for round two, which hasn't come out. It's frustrating. Um, Chapter seventy-one, we use that to do one bus, um, and, and we may be able to do that again. We'll, we'll see. We'll talk to the state. Um, but then we also have. Uh, but then we also have the EPA program that came out. It has a five billion dollar program to support electric buses. They have two and a half billion dollars dedicated directly to electric buses and two and a half billion to clean buses, which includes propane and and CNG. Uh, so there's going to be funding out there for the vehicles. So the next thing we need to do is pilot the vehicle to grid rapid charging infrastructure. This is our ability to charge our fleet in a way that is is low as cost by having utility decide when the vehicles charge so that they can charge us the lowest rate. But also be able to push power back to the grid. So that when we have our summer peak and everybody's running the air conditioner, we can reduce demand, avoid costs of the light plant, the light plant. Once we figure out what those values are, could share to purchase more buses. And that's the the fifth bullet there is getting away from uh, incentives and outside money funding these projects to a point where we can demonstrate that is the life cycle of this fleet and these buses is a net savings based on savings from the light plant and operations here. And and that's where we want to get to. So I think that's the last slide, or maybe there's a takeaways, Aaron. Oh, yeah, this is just rehashing a lot of of those things. The one I would like to highlight here is is if you set a goal and a target, which is a good thing to formalize, um, I would ask that it not be a timeline, like eighty percent electric fleet by X year. Uh, the reason is, is that we don't want you taking education funding away to fund transportation when we needed an incentive to make it happen. But I don't want us to let us, you know, lay back and be happy with ourselves because we have one or two electric buses. I want us to still aggressively pursue those funding opportunities. So that's, so I think of milestones, uh, setting, setting targets would be better to do. And that is all my slides. And I'm sorry I had so many. I didn't know how much time I had and I just put it all down. So
Thank you.
Please feel free to ask questions.
Yeah, no, that was incredibly helpful. I'm certain people will have questions. Um, so I'll turn it over to the committee if, um, people do have some.
So this is really great information. I want to know how much, how much that fan costs to save so much money, not that much. Do you want to know the funny part? I pushed back pretty hard on that fan initially. I'm like, well, it's gonna be hot or it's gonna be cold. It's you're out in the middle of the so prove to make them more comfortable and save energy.
And no, the fan had an expense to it. Uh, I don't know the exact figure, but
investment.
And and I'm guessing first year probably saved a couple thousand.
Yeah.
You paid for your one.
So you kind of glossed over it, but I don't want to gloss over it. I think the resilience of the light plant, as you pointed out, to um, not be at the vagaries of the fossil fuel industry right now. Um, we have a lot more options. So, um, electricity, I I don't see diesel coming down dramatically in the near future. It's probably gonna I don't think our energy prices of oil and Yeah.
They'll they'll set the price.
Yeah, so we have a lot of things way out of the world. Um, but, uh, you know, at some point I might just ask you, uh, off meeting, just to tell me a little bit more about what the price of operating in school bus per day is versus a diesel, but an electric school bus. And I know there's a lot of variables, winter.
Like, I can tell you averages, uh, I'll I'll give you a a a quick summary. To purchase the vehicle, there's that three times price difference or three and a half times price difference. To fuel the vehicle, you're going to see a big reduction in your cost of fuel. Uh, we've seen, you know, sixty, seventy percent reduction in in the cost compared to diesel. Uh, maintenance should have a reduction, but we did the early prototype. So we had a lot of uh, unexpected work and that was more an unrefined product, a prototype product problems. Um, so those haven't been seen in actuality yet. Um, and there's another category we should talk about that I'm forgetting at the moment. So, yeah, but it's it's not, uh, oh, the the vehicle to grid needs to be uh, demonstrated. There are pilots that have happened in the in the middle of the country. There's a great pilot going on around the San Diego area. Uh, there's a few other areas, but this is, this is still new. Uh, and so it would be, we need to do it with Concord Light in order to have Concord Light have the confidence to know how they could support the schools in buying more of these.
Right. How many buses do you feel like you need to to do the pilot? Like, we don't have enough now, probably.
Well, we we do have some funding from town meeting, um, to build this. Um, it is not enough. I'm hoping when we get the uh, EPA funding, that we can then look to uh, the Mass C E C Act Bus Program for assistance or look to other other uh, funding opportunities. But uh, if it comes to the point where we need funding and we can't find any other outside money for this, uh, I would, I would make a reasonable proposal for uh, town meeting to try to get some money to do that. Because again, I don't want to dip into education funding and have redirection of those funds. Uh, and that would be, you know, the citizens petition or something like that. But any other questions?
Here. Uh, thank you. That's been hugely informative. Um, I you sort of touched on this
Sure.
in your last response, but I'm curious if there are any districts that have you know, you, I I think when you were last, we were talking about the vehicle to grid model versus the actual buses have, or I know they both, you need both, but is there any community that has really taken this on in a bigger way than we are?
Yes.
That you can, that we, what, and what are you learning? Beverly?
Yeah, so Beverly has partnered with Highland Electric and they have uh, multiple school buses doing vehicle to grid with uh, national grid.
And how is it?
It's it's working well.
Where are they getting their funding? Is it mostly from this, from their town or?
Um, they're getting funding from um, different sources. Uh, they got an act bus grant. Uh, and it was, it was act now at that time. But the way that Highland Electric works is, is a turnkey model where they go to a community or a school board and they say, we can provide electric school buses at price parity to diesel. And then they take on the risk. So they have capital investment from investors. But what happens in that model is once the the they see value, the reason they're doing this as a business is they can make, make, make money. And so uh, we won't see savings in our our pupil transportation if we go with that model. We would see price parity. Uh, so we don't take any risks, but we also look at a reward. This way
But the emissions go down.
But the emissions do go down, yes. And and the vehicle to grid does work, but all the value of vehicles here goes to Highland, does not go back to the schools. So I'm hoping to demonstrate here, use federal and state dollars to pilot it, get it running, demonstrate what the actual value of Concord Light is. And because Concord Light and the school district are both under the town manager and and all basically ratepayers and taxpayers of Concord, we don't have a private company taking capital away from that, from that equation.
My other question is, you mentioned that, um, an electric, the lifespan of an electric bus is about ten years.
Well, that's, um, that's the lifespan of a bus.
Oh, so that was my question. Is that the same as a diesel bus or?
Yeah, so, um, the the batteries do lose capacity over time, so you'll lose range, but it's not to the point where you're going to see a dramatic loss over that ten years. What kills our buses is the road salt. So
Yeah.
one of the early committee talked about adding a washing station to the depot to to blast off the undercarriage of all the buses as they return to expand their life three to five years. So we could actually have buses that live to fifteen years now. Once you get a bus to fifteen years now, it's like a, it's a fashion question. Do we want to have old buses with fading paint or do we want to have shiny buses? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So it's the first time we've seen, or I've seen the the eighty twenty goal, which I think makes sense.
Yeah, it it's been talked about since, oh, almost the inception.
But we haven't adopted it as a, as a school
I don't think formally.
at this point. I imagine this is a sort of rhetorical question. Is the next step to put the uh, the current bus replacement schedule that we have, which is a hypothetical, uh, but we have it, uh, next to a hypothetical funding stream schedule, next to an eighty twenty goal and start to chart out, uh, then what the costs are going to be and uh, start to guess who's going to bear them. Is that, is that where we go?
I I can, I can help with that, uh, but I don't want to be looked at as a definitive because, for example, the EPA funding. Uh, there's two lotteries going on for the first year. Uh, there's a priority community lottery and everybody else. We're very much in the everybody else category. So, uh, you know, tribal communities, um, impoverished communities in America, they're priority. So basically that lottery is going to all get their buses. And then a lottery that includes us starts. Uh, and so next year will be more merit based in a grant program uh, where we can highlight our past efforts as reasons why Concord should get uh, funding for these, these efforts. But not, not today. And the other thing is, we have, it's a bus replacement program and we need to hold the title for the vehicles. So vehicles that are leased, uh, we can't put into request replacement until we finish the lease and take title.
So what you say really does suggest the need to chart out hypotheticals. So we can do that planning. One thing that we're not mentioning, but I think is something we're all sensitive to, and that is the health impacts as well, which I think probably drives which communities are more critical in need than others.
Yeah. And, uh, uh, you know, i- i- it's a, it's a simple concept. If you put a electric bus in a classroom and close all the doors, everybody's fine. Do with the diesel, they're not. And the exhaust comes back through the draft in the rear of the bus back up to the window. So it does get into the cabin and and it does go through our communities and, uh, but as you point out, uh, Concord generally has clean air when compared to, you know, Springfield, Massachusetts or downtown Boston. Uh, so should we, as a community, be getting funding when there's limited amounts or should Springfield or Boston? And that's why those are priority communities.
Right. Thank you.
All right.
Well, thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate. We're going to hear a little bit more probably on the status of the grant from Bob later, but um, we certainly will continue to be in touch with you.
Well, great. Thank you for having me.
And, yeah. It, Bob, do you want to break right into your discussion about what you're doing? Now or later?
We we haven't heard an answer in terms of whether we're funded or not for the grant.
Do you want to just talk about the grant that we applied for just in general?
So
That we did.
Brian did.
Yeah, he said all there is.
All right, we'll just add that, um, that five billion dollars seems like a lot, but when you divide it by three hundred and twenty five thousand and uh, sixteen, fifteen to sixteen thousand buses across the country. Uh, we have three hundred and twenty two school districts in our state. We are in a very different trajectory. If we get funded, then if we don't, uh, we have a lot of buses that we don't have to worry about paying for. So, um, you know, I think we have a better chance in the second round if we don't get it the first round by having gone through the application. So, but we're at the mercy of the lottery process and, um, we'll, we'll see how it goes. We're hopeful. I mean, we did the work. I'm sure there's some districts that that haven't gone, gone through the process. But I think Brian covered me. We're not a priority district, um, that kind of goes against that to that.
Right, right. Thank you. Okay. All right, so we're on to, um, our goals and you should have gotten from Alexa probably around, I don't know, four thirty five o'clock. Um, kind of the aggregated goals that we then talking about these past sessions and now we're on to our goal session three. So let Alexa start that off.
All right, so I think we'll run this more or less the same as we did last time in our session two. Just as a quick recap, we started off this process in our oh geez, was it our August twenty third meeting where, um, we broke into groups? We talked about the different types of goals that, you know, we 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 coalesced around themes. Um, last meeting, we talked about our professional practice goals around communications and the budget. And then for this week's discussion, we're going to talk more about our two student center goals. Where we landed on and they're not like you know, super snazzy sounding, um, a one around student success and wellbeing and one sort of in a general category of diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. I appreciate so much that you guys all, um, you know, most of you guys were able to forward some suggestions. I synthesized them into this document, um, that I would like to go through together and we can talk about, um, if they make sense to everybody. Um, and we took a stab at based on our August twenty third data, then, um, the suggestions that have come in over the past two weeks. A six, uh, a stab at the goal, which is important. And then also almost as important, if not more important, um, the action steps. So our first goal is surround student success and I'm going to add and wellbeing to my document. I just had student success in the document you see there. I forgot to add the wellbeing part, but um, a stab at this goal might read. The joint school committees will evaluate, evaluate available metrics on student success and wellbeing to ensure both our policies and spending are successfully meeting students where they are and helping them get to where they need to be. Maybe it might make sense to go through the action items because they'll inform whether I suppose the goal in itself makes sense. So we had stay informed on the district's student success initiatives, which would mean we would schedule presentations. I talked about that a little bit earlier when, um, I had mentioned in our chairs report that we sort of kicked off a little bit those discussions with the superintendent on initiatives within the schools that focus on new and innovative ways we're supporting the success of students in both traditional and non-traditional ways. I even think like tonight's presentation on calculus project might, you know, have been something that could be a checkmark next to that goal. Um, some of the things that, um, have come in through our, um, ideas have been challenge success, the youth risk behavior survey, outcomes from the strategic plan, whether that might be something we talk about next year or this year could maybe be up for like a little bit of debate. Then, oh, this is wrong. I need to, this sub-bullet should be of, it's full bullet. So a second larger bullets, I apologize, would be to cross-reference the fiscal twenty four budget to ensure that appropriate resources are allocated to ensure success of these initiatives. Um, then of course we would identify policies that intersect with ways in which the district supports student success. Full disclosure, I've done a little pre-work on that. It's not a lot, but nonetheless, um, you know, we should, we should commit ourselves to it. Proactively communicate with the community at large on student success and wellbeing initiatives and their outcomes. I I like this one in particular because I think it informs our professional practice goals around communications. Um, and then host parent and or student forums. Some ideas of types might be CCHS guidance department and the initiatives that they're, um, doing to help kids be successful beyond high school as well as, um, at CCHS discussing the elective offerings. Are they, are they contemporary? Are they rich? Those types of things. So that's our first collective stab from this committee. And at this point, I would open it up to conversation about both the overall goal and how it's worded itself as well as the action steps. Anyone have some ideas, comments, suggestions, anything?
All right, uh, thank you. Um, this is a great start. Uh, I I think it is something that really emphasizes the inputs, the activities. And I wonder what, uh, my colleagues might think about uh, outputs or as they say, what what will be different if we're successful? Um, so for example, uh, could we be, uh, explicit about certain metrics we'd like to change? Now, I don't have any brilliant suggestions other than I'd like to open it up to, because I'm of a mind that a bold goal is one that, uh, you could succeed at or not succeed at. And I'm not sure if if I could fail at this because it's it's heavy on the inputs, on the activities, not on the declaration of where we Because it's, it's heavy on the inputs, on the activities, not on the declaration of where we'd like to be someday.
Yeah, but I think the biggest trick and Cynthia and Carrie had the benefit of having. Direct adjacency to Dorothy during their conversation. Our goals have to be fully contained within the scope of things that we can do. So for example, if we said. You know, we want to, when you're talking about the outcomes, we want to change the experience. I'm just being broad for. You know, ease of the conversation of the students at CCHS. If we can't do it alone and our goal requires us to say. And so Lori do this and Mike Mistrullo do this. It's, it can't be our goal. So we have to have. Ownership of it in its entirety. Once we talk about, um. Asking others to do our work, which is outside of our narrow purview. It becomes the district's goal, which I think we support, of course, um, by virtue of the way we evaluate, but. I don't know. Anyone else have opinions or thoughts?
Yeah, can I, can I say something? Because I mean, in the, in the thing that I sent you, I mean, when I got to that exact thing of like, what are we doing exactly, right? I got to this, there might not be anything that we actually. Like measure a gain on this year, but if we can establish what are the key metrics that matter to the school committee? Right? I think we can communicate better and highlight places where the district excels. And better understand where student needs are, um, in order to best determine how to allocate resources. So, so Court, I think. I mean, it's kind of what Alexa is saying, like, I, I, I think that'd be really great if the school committee came up with a. Few key things, you know, like a list of stuff that we check in on in the beginning of the year, the end of the year and year over year. Uh, because that's something that we can. Like we can look at stuff, but and it will inform work back and forth, but I think it would help. Also with transparency and just to, to signal to the community what, where, where are the focuses and where you can, um. And where you can see the gains that happen year over year.
Yeah. So then, so you've articulated that really well. So like i- in that regard too, if you're talking about metrics, I, we might actually include. Your Sarah's suggestions, just full disclosure, were the challenge success, youth, youth risk behavior survey and the strategic plan. To Court and Sarah's point, there might be, if we adopt this goal as our own, like to inform ourselves and. In so, i- in saying that we're going to inform ourselves, it, it sort of de facto says, and these are the metrics we value. To, to, to both Sarah and Court's point, would it make sense for us to quickly brainstorm some other? Metrics, things that come to me are like star data. Um, yeah, Sarah or, yeah, okay.
I, I just in the area of wellbeing, I think, um, you have three things that. It's like to talk in the least, so everything that I think. The school committee could continue to support financially. One is.
Maybe share with Bob, share with Bob.
So one is last year, we made a switch, um, for our therapy, um, referral system from the William James College to. Carisalis. They are literally the same price. They're ten thousand dollars. Um, but we get monthly metrics on how many families are using. You know, Carisalis at this point, we made the switch because we were doing that. Analysis between the two companies and found that we got a lot more referrals and actually kids hooked up and families hooked up with. Therapy, needed therapy and, uh, drug abuse and so forth, counseling, um. With Carisalis. So that's very measurable. You know, we get the metrics every single month. Um, so that's one. Uh, the second one is that we are doing, um, a pilot for, um. Two social emotional programs at the elementary level. One is called responsive classroom. Um, and the other one is called Fly Five, but they're both, um. Uh, built along Castle's five competencies of social emotional wellbeing. And that includes having difficult conversations. We especially embraced, um, Fly Five in particular because. Um, having difficult conversations around race and ethnicity is part of what we're doing. Uh, what we've learned is that. Kids need the skills to have this be. Two or three years before they actually get encountered with the situation. So, um, that's why we're really looking at the elementary. Um, and that's very measurable. Uh, again, you know, it's a pretty big, uh, financial ask, those two programs, but I think. It's very measurable whether or not we have it, whether or not all kids are able to participate in it. How much time is that, uh, given? And then we have, um, metrics that are, are part of the program. Of measuring kids' skills. So that's right on the progress reports.
Oh, wow. Yeah, so that. Oh, you have like progress reports coming out of those.
You receive progress reports from us where we give that information. So it's very measurable. Yep. Yep. And then the last one is that we've always, uh, for the last five years, we've had a social emotional greener. Um, in the middle school and the high school called the pair. Um, and that's a strengths based. Uh, kids take it and it's like, you know, do you feel like you have the skills to make a new friend? Do you feel like you know who to turn to if you have a problem? Um, you know, those kinds of strengths based. Um, and then the idea is to. Figure out where the weaknesses are, e- either they're like lots of kids have them and we can run a group, we can have a program. Or individual kids have them and we can intercede there. Um, so that program, we felt like. Isn't all we would want it to be. So we're doing a, a pilot. Of a different program. It's called the Dessa and it's a different measure.
What's that called?
The Dessa, D E S S A. Again, it's a castle aligned with the competencies, the skills you want kids to have, uh, to be able to. Function socially and take care of themselves, their wellbeing, their emotional wellbeing. Um. But the great thing about this is the kids are reported on by their teachers, meaning it's observational. So how often does a kid do this? How often does a kid do that? And because of that, it starts in kindergarten. So we're doing a small pilot this year to see how it goes. And then we can really. Track over time how kids are growing in their skills, if that makes sense. And so I, I think the support that the school committee could give is the financial support to make sure that that's happening.
And do you feel like at the end of this year, you'll have enough information to be able to report back to us on all of these programs?
I, yes, yes, yes. Yeah. I, I not on, um. The pilots, it's just whether or not. Teachers feel like they're effective, kids feel, you know, that are taken care of, but it's, we're not going to have metrics on that. Until we actually start using them full force. Okay. But it's whether or not we implement them with fidelity. Yeah, yeah.
Sarah, just to circle back, I, I see your hand up.
What, uh, well, I don't, I'm not, I was going to ask a question about the, about the Dessa and the greener and all that, but I'll just email a question to the chairs. It gets into the weeds, I think about, well, I guess quickly, they, well, the, the greener you said was in the high school and the middle school. Was that, did I miss here or is that?
The pair is currently used in the middle school and the high school.
And high school, but the Dessa is starting.
We're piloting the Dessa K to twelve in small pockets.
Oh, can work in twelve. Okay. I mean, in the, whatever, in the, in the, in the, whatever, the nine through twenty-two group. It can work for that. Okay. I didn't, I wasn't sure with the. Depending on teacher input, if there was enough interact, you know. Enough basis for teachers to fill.
Yeah. And the great thing about the high school part of it is that the kids can fill it out, but the teachers can also fill it out. So you can see like where it's aligned. Um, so that's great.
Thank you.
Sarah, can I ask, is this sort of what you were meaning like with metrics and?
Yeah. And I, I mean, I think I was thinking like, 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 you know, achievement gap or, and I, you know, just. I don't know what else I'm thinking.
I know, this is hard.
Could we ask, uh, our superintendent, uh, about? Any academic metrics that matter because most of these are SEL metrics, which are critical. Nothing else happens without, uh, kids feeling. Safe. We understand that, but, uh, ultimately that leads to, uh, the other, the other piece of our work, which is academic mastery.
Yeah, uh, I'm happy to answer. Yeah, yeah. So we have a basket of fourteen academic measures that we give. Um, and, uh, we report on them regularly, uh, federally and to the state. Um, and so you've all mentioned the one that we use internally the most, which is the STAR three sixty as our screener. We use it, uh, for dyslexia screening in the early grades, um, and then all the way through for just general reading. And then also math. So those two things, um, then, uh, probably the biggest measure that we've been missing here is the MCAS data. Cause you're all really used to that, but you'll have a, a, a measure of that, um. At the, uh, elementary level in the early grades, we have two or three, uh, much deeper, um. Assessments of students reading. Um, so, uh, one is called the BAS, one is called the TC, the Teachers College. Um, but they're one-on-one administered, uh, assessments. Uh, then in, uh, K to six, we have math assessments that we use. Um, from everyday math. So it's basically a unit test. We pre-test and post-test every kid, um, for every unit. Uh, so we follow those. We follow, you know, all the achievement data from the high school, the, uh, SATs, the ACTs. Um, all of our ELL students get, um, access, um, tested every year. Um, so that's give you kind of a flavor of all of the, yeah, did I not say APs? Yeah, APs. Just as we, yeah, and then, you know, it's probably the most important is, um, overall over a kid's lifespan with us is looking at their grades. Especially, uh, their grades in, on assessments, because that's really showing their, their knowledge and their skills. Um, and so we are very excited that right now, you know, we were able to hire a new data person, our academic coordinator. And we have a committee and we're, uh, building this awesome dashboard. So we're just going to amaze you in about a year. But yeah, with all, with all the academic measures. And MCAS, uh, uh, ACT, SAT, APs, yeah, we're all those. Well, you'll see them this year. It'll be more beautiful next year. Yeah.
Carrie. Sorry.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to touch base. Sarah mentioned, um, the achievement gap. I would like. Maybe more discussion around closing that and around, you know. Kids with IEPs, uh, making sure they're on target with their peer levels. Um, some discussion and clarification around that type of, um, achievement gap, making sure that's, um. They're on target with their peers.
And that could be something that when Deb comes to us, that she talks to us about specifically, um. And, you know, in one of her presentations. So again, like that's something that we'll get reported on. I feel like. You know, everybody's going to come to us and report on everything, but that's kind of our. Piece of this in your goal is to make sure we're hearing all of this and we know what we're looking for.
Harry.
So as we think about a goal, does it, would it make sense to, um. Break it into like a student success and wellbeing and the things that we want, like the data and metrics on.
Yeah, and I think.
And then I don't know, I don't know. I hear you, Court. I totally agree. When you set goals, you want to know what you're striving to. But I don't.
That was part of the exercise I think we did on August twenty-third.
Yeah.
Well, uh, I guess.
But I do, I do like Sarah's idea of maybe identifying. Priority areas. I don't know. I don't know what influence we have over that even. I'm not sure.
There's, th- there's one way a school committee can exercise leadership within its very limited. Prerogatives of policy and budget and superintendent relations. And that is simply what we pay attention to. That's a form of leadership, what we pay, where we spend our time, what matters to us. And so by calling out, uh, the student success metrics, academic and social emotional, that we really want to drill into. I, I think that declares to us what matters. And then we ask, how are we doing? Uh, and if, if we're not pleased with the results, how does that equate with our policy missteps, our budget missteps? And how do we go fix those? To our, the arena that we're allowed to work in and do something, do something about it. And just one more thing. I, here, here we are still September. I don't want our, uh, administrative team that reports to Lori getting concerned that. Uh, this is a committee that desires lots of presentations. There are a lot of ways to communicate data. You communicated internally in memos and reports and so on. And so, uh, I think it's contingent on, on us to make sure that this is not a make-work effort for, uh, for school personnel. Doesn't have to be.
And to that end, I mean. Kristen, um, has put out a lot of. Different things we can look at. Sarah had some specific suggestions under the, those bullets. Would it make sense for us? And I don't know how we would do this with, I know, because I don't, you know, I don't want this to take hours and hours, but, but might it make sense for us to? To cross-reference with Kristen, for example, what might be available this year. So things that she can present on where the data is going to be compelling for us because. When I look at all of this, I think it would be, I'd be really hard pressed to prioritize. You know, what we'd want to look at, but to Court's point, we kind of have to because we can't. You know, we can't possibly pro- like cover all of this in a single year. So what I might suggest, now that we, and then this is up for like discussion, but what I might suggest is that. I've written down all of these things that Kristen and Sarah and others have put together. Might I suggest that we then go back to Kristen? Um, with respect to curricular and sort of initiatives, Debbie Dixon as director of, um, Student Services who manages, um. You know, students on IEPs and that, and they could come back with some of the more measurable things. For us to see over the year, uh, over the course of the year.
And I would note that we're not asking for any new, uh, instruments on the dashboard. These are instruments already on your dashboard.
Aisha.
And so just to talk on the, the wellbeing part. Just to speak on the wellbeing part, I would like, um, if we can track. Um, since this month has been a very stressful month for the MEKO students and, you know, in, in Canada, probably the Concord students as well. Um, we've had a lot of racial is- issues. Would we be able to track that somehow and then, uh, you know, and see if, you know, like I said in my email the other day. It would be good to be proactive instead of reactive and, um, track that to see if we've, we've, you know. Progressed at all by the end of the year.
Yeah, definitely. And, and I think too.
Some of that could go under the DEIB.
Yeah, we got, we've got two goals too, that we can play with that.
Yeah, and I, there's a lot of linkage and overlap between these last, between these two. Right? Um, because the whole, the, the point of it is to make sure that every student is being. You know, emboldened to succeed to, you know, best.
Karen, can you scroll down a little bit to the DEIB goal, just so it's on the screen? Sorry, do you mind?
Carrie, just a clarification. I wasn't suggesting that we like determine focuses like priorities for the district or priority. I was just trying to. Get to what are some metrics that year over year, school committee can, uh, look at? Just to keep. A good idea to, to keep on the pulse of what's happening, right? How are our students doing? What are their needs? Like where have we succeeded? Things like, like if you look at like our electives, right? Like we have so many elective offerings compared to other students. So are students using all of these electives? Cause if you look at other districts, they don't have, um. So many computer science options and, um. So just to, I, I think there's an opportunity to highlight some of the things that we really have. You know, where we excel and, uh. And to figure out, you know, where we have needs.
Um, so that, all of those, the list that just sort of was discussed by Kristen is going to be, are going to be those sub-bullets under. You know, X, where you see on the existing document extracurricular. Um, oh no, sorry, that's DEIB. Sorry, up top, um, Youth Risk Behavior Survey Strategic Plan. So again, what I might suggest, if you guys think this is a good idea. Taking Sarah's suggestion, running it through our administrators so that they can maybe help us determine what are those annual metrics that they look at? And then we can use that list to see, you know, to your point, Sarah, I like the idea of like having. An idea of the things that we look at year after year. So school committees become accustomed to seeing those as a means by way. To evaluate where we're going. Cynthia?
Can we also break apart?
Can we also break apart K eight from CC? Because I think we're, I feel like in some of our presentations, we blend the two together. And I really think it would be good to have a standalone, you know, sort of discussion about the high school versus K eight. Even though I know we use some of the same tools.
Yeah.
It's just that way, I think we can really.
Yeah. And then, okay, so that sort of addresses bullet one. And then. What do we think of the bullet two? Just making sure that when we look at the budget. We're making these considerations to ensure, you know, that we're, that they're supported. I think Kristin spoke a little bit to that. Is are people comfortable with that? Thoughts? Yes. Hands? No.
Well, because I think whenever you're talking about, you know, what we're doing, I mean, it all has budget impact. You know, we should see some of our initiatives in our budget too. So I I think they go hand in hand.
And then I think bullet, oh, and then the the policies goes without saying. Like I said, I did a little pre-work and there aren't a tremendous amount of policies, but. That's something maybe the policy chair can do also some pre-work on. And then with respect to proactively communicating with the community at large, I think that to Court's point is about. Us determining what these strategic priorities are and doing two things, like making sure that A. We're talking about them in our meetings and then B, we are. That we're using the tools that we have to communicate with the community, whether that's our listserv and we're more like thoughtful about how we talk to. Or ensuring like that Tom Lucy's doing a good job of those kinds of things. I don't, does anyone have any other ideas about proactive communication? Other than that, uh, Sarah, Sharon?
Just one comment. Maybe when we're reporting the numbers, also give some background so we can understand those numbers. Just to help clarify.
Just to add to Sharon's point for, I would recommend that you. Put this all proactively in the context of having just gone through a pandemic.
Yeah.
Because all of our key measures are down. Academics are all down. You're about to hear MCAS. Scores that are ten points, twelve points lower, not for Concord, but in general for the state. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey is way down. You know, kids are are having more risky behaviors because they're more isolated and so forth. So and then, you know, the overwhelming national data on more behavior incidents, you know, it's it's everywhere. So like to couch that in like this is our context. We're actually kind of digging out of a hole.
In a sense, it's a new benchmark.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and I think that, I think that, you know, the pandemic changed some of our. You know, the trends, the the trajectories and all of that and inevitably impacted where the needs are. So I think everybody appreciates that there's a, you know. Needs are everywhere and very much linked to COVID. But I think if for me, it'd be helpful to know where are the newer emerging issues?
And then finally, we have the one about forums, which I'm wondering if instead of being specific with sub-bullets. If we might instead talk about committing to one forum as opposed to multiple. Just because I know they're sometimes hard to do and it will give us flexibility if other issues sort of. E- emerge throughout the year to be flexible. But if we can commit to one and. I don't know, talk about that as the year might emerge, but really to commit to one kind of parent forum around student. Success and well-being.
So are you talking, taking those other two bullets?
You're taking the sub-bullets out and just saying.
I would agree with that.
Just because, again. I I, you know, court, court saying, oh, we could fail at this goal and that would be okay. But I do, I don't want to put us in a position where we're, where we're taking on too much. Our committee's really is. Busy and whatnot. Carrie.
It's how does the the forum differ from one of our coffees?
Uh, okay, I I well, Lori might want to weigh in that. I think it's. Generally in our forums, we put some, we put some of your people in the room to as expertise kind of folks.
Probably a fair difference.
Right?
Yeah.
Would you agree? Anything else? And I'm like.
There's usually a topic of.
Yeah.
I mean, I I appreciate you being a little broader, but I usually there's a little more of a theme where coffees are wide open.
Right, yeah.
And again, I'm and I'm not suggesting we don't have a theme. I'm saying instead of identifying that theme tonight, we could make it something that. We check in on in a month or two and say, is there, is there something that seems particularly compelling?
So maybe we move that up to the communications.
Or just host a TBD student forum, parent-student forum.
It could happen more organically depending on what's happening in the district or if, you know, I mean, I'm not, COVID is a really good and bad example. But I mean, there was a COVID full and it was, you know, you.
Multiple.
Nurses there, multiple COVID forms. You've got school day there, you've got nurses there, you've got staff there. And so something may percolate in the next few months that we say this is a really great idea for a forum.
And we've put some sped ones too.
I I think we have two that are staring us in the face. I don't think we should decide necessarily tonight, but one is in fact. Recovery from the pandemic across all the the entire spectrum of student and staff and faculty like. It's worth talking about perhaps. And the other one is our DEI, DEIB initiatives and the climate of our schools. Those are staring at us front and center and I suspect they won't go away. So. Perhaps when we resurface this conversation, those two might be on the list. And because I want to be careful about forums in that there is so much that is. How should I put it? The target audience specific going on. That we don't want to try to replace or supplant that.
Yeah.
You know, what the high school guidance does is germinate for juniors when the juniors. So on, we don't want to replace anything that's going on that's highly specific to a to a subgroup.
So we'll commit to being, well, we'll commit to doing a forum potentially and with a little bit of. Flexibility, if we will, about a specific topic. Is everyone comfortable? I I know it's hard, but we'll come back at our next meeting with a more. Specific list that I think Kristin, Lori, Debbie. Might work on collectively that says these are something, these are some metrics-based things that we can bring you. And hopefully they're the kinds of things that are year after year. Then we will, I think everyone is okay with bullet two with respect to the budget. Bullet three with respect to the policies.
Can we pause on budget?
Sure.
So we're doing workshops. Thank you. Sorry. So we're doing workshops, but what I s- what seems notably absent is our primary budget responsibility. Which is to bring a budget to a town meeting. We know that staff does virtually all of the work. But then we, in public session together, make certain that there's a school committee understanding of it. Such that there's a school committee support for it. So I don't see anywhere here that we produce a budget.
And if we don't. Well, again, I think, I think we were trying to, if you go back to the August twenty-third meeting with Dorothy, she talked a little bit about, and I did too. About differentiating between our job responsibilities and our goals. That is, that's just what we have to do. It's not. It's not a goal. We don't get a choice on the matter. We have to do it. But we can. Talk about throwing it in a profession, our professional practice goal under an action step for the budget.
Or we can have a a side piece that says these are our core functions and they are.
Sure, but I think again, that can be separated apart from the goals. But those are, it's a separate issue than goals.
But think about our words here. Right now, the goal is to have a knowledge of budget procedure. Well, why do you have a knowledge of budget procedure? You do so you can execute on your fiduciary goals, which is fundamentally. Bringing a budget forward.
Sure.
I think it says as it relates to school committee responsibilities, can we just spell that out? Which is to create a budget? You know what I mean?
I just think it'd be odd to.
Yeah, 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 no, I I.
Yeah, sure. And we can throw it up in our professional practice ones, which.
I think you could, it says that in, in as it relates to school committee responsibilities, which is to create a budget, you just make it more clear.
Okay, why we can, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure to put that in there. Okay, moving on to DEIB.
Karen, can you scroll for us?
Sorry.
Thanks.
Question about the goals workshops that we were going to, we have the two goals workshops. Is there any way to consider? Melding them into one. So we have like someone from MASC who's here to talk about. What the responsibilities are, what the protocols are, but also have. The specific examples, like we look at our budget development and all like, so that rather than having the two.
You want to consolidate something? I'm going to say, I think everyone's going to be thrilled with that idea. Yes. Um, so yeah, we could make that, we could turn that into one comprehensive evening. Yeah.
And we can look at Concord and Concord Carlisle. And I think, I mean, I mean, for me personally, like what I'm sure looking at. A single versus the regional budget, I can, there are takeaways that I can use back in Carlisle, right? So like that would be something, yeah.
Yeah, and as we get to that action step, that could just be like an easy, like a suggestion, like let's do this in one night. Done. Yeah, so I think that's awesome. All right, so going back to DEIB. The stab is the joint school committees will work to ensure district budgetary allocations and policies are in line with our shared commitment for an equitable, inclusive. And anti-racist future in Concord and Concord Carlisle schools. What do we think about that? We are going to have to vote on these. You guys, if you have like comments or suggestions, let us, I mean, you know, eventually.
I've looked at them a few times and.
I know.
I I'm on board with this one.
Okay. Um, so then these are sort of very similar to the student success ones above. Stay informed on the district's DEIB initiatives. I might do for the same, I might have the same idea, which is about, you know, and and. There are some suggestions about metrics on extracurricular involvement, teacher retention and the DESI report card and MCAS results. We might have, I might suggest having the same conversation with Andrew about some things that he can bring us. Annually this year that we would then see to Sarah's point, year after year after year. So maybe we would do, we could, I could ask of Andrew that same thing and come back with some ideas from him. Does that seem like a good idea? Or does anyone have any additional things to think about? Um, then the same one about cross-referencing the budget. Um, and then similarly identify policies. I've done some pre-work here. There are definitely more. So there's, there's real work to do here on budget. I mean, sorry, not on budget, on bullet three. And then similarly too, just ensuring that we proactively communicate both with our meeting structure. And what we talk about as well as communicating out to the public.
And I do think that these DEIB ones and the student success ones, they're kind of mirrored in a way because you have the cross, cross. Referencing of the budget, you've got the policies in there. So I think the layout is accurate. And again, these are things that, you know, this is what we can do. Because you keep bringing us back to that, like what, what is our part in all of this? So. I like this one.
Thoughts, Cynthia?
I'm just going to say in a month, we're going to have a newspaper. It's going to every household. So what we say at our meetings will be covered, not just in Carlisle now, but in Concord. So I think that that's probably going to be one of the most effective tools versus our.
Yeah.
Small subscriber.
And it might even help us build our subscriber list as people become engaged that way.
Yeah, so you know, that's going to be an interesting.
Lori, you sat down with them, didn't you? Have you sat down with them yet?
Yeah, I met with them two weeks ago. So we talked COVID impact and recovery from pandemic. That was the question focus, but they're very interested in being. Highly engaged with the schools and reporting what we're doing and your work and all of it. So there's, there's a great opportunity there. I agree. It's not, it's not a subscription based.
Everyone's going to get it. Yeah, that's great. Sharon, did you have something?
Uh, just to comment, under teacher retention, should we add to that maybe a continued commitment to? Not only retention, but hiring diverse.
Yeah.
Teachers and staff.
Yep, so we can talk to Andrew. Yep.
And again, I mentioned tonight that I'm going to be part of that CCTA one. There's not, there's not a similar committee at CTA, correct?
Not at the moment, no.
Not at the moment, okay. And we also have student retention as well. They'll create a healthy environment so the students want to come back to Foundry. We lost a lot of kids last year.
Yep.
We should have that data for sure.
All right. And this is a good start. So what I will, so. I have some goals of putting this a more synthesized document back to you, but it might take a little bit because we have some work. Sorry, Sharon.
I'm sorry, just one.
No, no.
Under the proactively communicate with the community about our DEIB initiatives. Maybe also reporting on some of the incidents that are driving those initiatives so we can understand the whole scope of. What's going on.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, guys. This is like real work.
I know this, and thank you to Alexa because she's done a huge amount of work on this and really for keeping us focused and keeping on all of us. To get you information to work on it. Because I think that, you know, we're not all perfect to think smart goal writers. I think Kristin and Lori have more experience with that than we do. So it was a learning process for all of us. So I think it was, I'd actually, it was great.
And thank you to Kristin, Lori, and for being willing to work collaboratively with us and getting what we need. So I appreciate that too. It's a big deal.
All right.
All right.
All right, so we're good. Thank you so much. All right, on to our strategic planning process. Okay, so. As you know, the committee is getting together. It's going to be about roughly, I'll just say fifty-ish people will be on that committee. It's in process right now. Dr. Hunter's reached out to ECGs. Sarah and Sharon are reached out to Carlisle. We've got community members, select board. So it's going. So now it's our opportunity to figure out who from this group is willing to go and be part of those four sessions.
And we've heard from Carrie and Domingos in the affirmative so far. Court.
Yes, okay. So let's see who's available.
Sarah.
I had a clarification because I thought that they'd commit, you had to commit to being at at least three of them if you.
All four.
It's all, it is all four.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You can go and observe. If like, if you can only go to two of them, you can always go and observe, but you cannot participate unless you're able to go to all four. But you can always sit and watch, correct? That's the way.
That's up to you. I mean, last time, everybody, all seven members did every meeting. So we didn't have much discussion about how to do it if you couldn't come. So it's really up to you.
Okay, so Carrie, you can make all four. Domingos can make all four. Court is a yes for all four.
I'd love to hear the dates again. I thought they were in my calendar.
You'd love to what? Oh, the dates. Yeah, yeah. Oh, you wrote, you wrote them down.
I have them. Yeah. Monday, October seventeen, they're all at four o'clock.
More to seven, yeah.
Yeah, four to seven. Wednesday, December seventh, Wednesday, February eighth, and Wednesday, March twenty-second.
Correct.
Okay.
Hi, we just had a question from our, our Carlisle PTO. They wanted to know what's the time commitment outside of those dates?
The only time commitment outside is to host one visioning session in between the October and December meeting. That could even be at their regular Carlisle PTO meeting and it wouldn't be anything additional. So good question.
Okay, so no one else can go to all four. So everyone is invited to. Sit and observe and be part of it on any of those meetings. And we have Court and Carrie as definites. So it looks like either you two are going to be the definites and if.
Yeah, and I mean, and again, if we just revisited the dates, if there's anyone else who wants to throw their hat in the rain, let us know.
And I was part of the last one. I think you were too. So I mean, we're certainly happy to share the welfare and. You know, for Carrie and Court, I think that'd be great if you represented us. And then if anybody else can go, certainly feel free to go and participate.
Yeah, my only ask is you give us an RSVP because this room, there's a lot of people. So setting up how many chairs we need for you to watch just be helpful.
Okay.
If I might, Domingos, did you say you could make some of them?
Yes.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, that's great.
If none of us will be going.
Probably right.
All right.
All right.
All right, thank you for that. And now on to Bob. You're up. Thank you.
Going to ask Erin to put up the budget timeline.
Uh, actually the budget timeline, Erin. Just right in the agenda.
She's probably got all the presentations up and needs to go to the webpage now.
Agenda, it's got the big draft.
No, she'll get it.
Thank you. So, uh, the first item is just to, to kind of go over the, the budget timeline. Um. These dates are kind of, were based, built off of last year's timeline. Uh, with some, some adjustments, um. As we've gotten dates from the town. Uh, we don't have dates from Carlisle yet for a lot of these things. So those will be plugged in. I believe those are getting, uh, firmed up in the next week or so.
Uh, there's a draft. Yeah, we just.
So, um, you know, we are tonight at September twenty seventh. Um, you can see kind of the things we, we've talked about already. Um, we will be going over the preliminary. I should start at the beginning. We've distributed zero-based budgets to all of the, um. Administrators in the district, the principals and the department heads, they'll be working on building those budgets. Between now and, and late October. And, uh, the review will be meeting to review those, um, with the administrators the first week in November. Um, as part of the guidelines process with the town, uh, we've shared, uh, an initial presentation. It was a month earlier this year than last year. Um, so we kind of scrambled, uh, to do that, but that was, uh, presented and we'll be presenting that here tonight. Uh, we'll be presenting an updated presentation to them on October eleventh, um, on October thirteenth. Um, an updated version of this presentation. And, uh, we'll preview it with the school committee two days before that. Um, October first is another big date. That's, um, when the enrollments, um, that guide our regional budget presentation are outlined. November seventeenth is when the Con- Concord Finance Committee issues preliminary budget guidelines. Um, which will kind of give us an indication of what they're looking for in terms of an increase. The, I guess the next big date is that, uh, December sixth is when we present our initial budget here to school committee. Um, and then the public hearing is on December thirteenth. Um, and so you can see that there's other dates here as well. I don't think we necessarily need to go through them all. We'll flesh out. Dates after January more as we go and as we get dates from Carlisle, but this kind of just wanted, just wanted to give you a picture of where we were. And, um, as we get updates, we'll, we'll share them. So the second item, I'm.
I'm just curious, what's S C O M? I love new acronyms.
School committee. I, I ran into space on a line. Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, Vincom, Scom, we got all sorts of acronyms in education. So. The, uh, second item is just to give you an update. You might recall that we had a feasibility study for. Looking at electrification of the Alcott Elementary School Building. Um, we received five proposals. Um. We went through and ranked the proposals and then after we ranked them, we looked at the price proposals. Which is how the R C P process works. Uh, our highest rated firm was Weston and Sampson. Um, unanimously amongst our evaluators. Um, they have a lot of, uh, experience in the energy space, uh, net zero projects. An experienced management team, experienced project team. And their price proposal was, uh, kind of in the middle. The price proposals weren't that different, but they were not the highest price proposal. So it was nice to get a. Um, their price was forty-four thousand, five hundred, which was, uh, less than our budget of fifty thousand. So. We are moving forward with the contract with them and, um, as part of their. Work, we've, um. Required that they'll have, they'll be available for three public presentations of their information. And we'll work out where the best forums for that are. One, uh, likely would be here. Um, we'll figure out the others as we go. Um, so. Will be our first kind of look at, kind of getting a roadmap for what it might, uh, look like to electrifier, uh, one of our elementary buildings. And the third item I have is to, um, go over the preliminary projections that we provided to the Concord Finance Committee for both of our. Two school districts. Um, can I ask you to put that up also, Erin, please? Next slide, please. So, um, we. Met with, uh. Perishar, uh, who, um. Is the chair of the Concord, uh, Guidelines Committee, um, and a member of the Finance Committee. Um, we talked about, uh, kind of what type of information, um, he wanted. And one piece that we added this year was funding sources. Um, so I'm going to go through this at a, at a. Kind of a high level and we will go through it more, um, in October, but. What we're able to do is to project out, um, five years, um. Looking at different expense categories and we'll have more detail on the next slide. Um, but before, uh, we look at that. You know, at a high level, we see that F Y twenty-four is, is, um, a year where we anticipate, um. A bit of a, a challenge and we'll work to, to do what we can to address it. And. From a funding source standpoint. Uh, grants, the, the district expenditures at the top represent all of our expenditures, not just general fund, but expenditures from grants revolving funds. The S R funds, circuit breaker. So it's all of our spending. When we look at the funding sources that we have, we subtract that spending and we get to a general fund budget. Uh, you'll see that the grants, um, starts to, uh, kind of, you know, continues twenty-three to twenty-four increases a bit. And then it starts to ramp down. And that represents the sun setting of the S R funds. Um, so we'll have, um, we have. Substantial portion of that, um. Let's say. F Y twenty-four, uh, some of it we can use in twenty-three, some of it in twenty-four, and it ends in September thirty, uh, in fiscal year two. Thousand twenty-five. So we could potentially spend into early F Y twenty-five. But after that, we will see, um. Uh, unless there's some type of renewal that we don't know about now, kind of those funds will dry up and. Um, they serve as a nice safety net right now. Um, we won't have that safety net in future years. Um, we've done a good job at not creating a fiscal cliff. Um, and you might've heard about that. It certainly happened with, um. Um, the American Recovery Act, I think back about ten, fifteen years ago. Um, but you know, we've done a, a superintendent hunter and, um, my predecessor. Uh, Jared did a good job in, in aligning things that are, um. You know, not going to create a fiscal cliff so that we have things that we don't have to pull into the general fund at the end of the S R funding. So that's the good news that, um, you know, on the flip side, we do have a challenge in F Y twenty-four. Um, we have some, and, um. Known expenses that we'll go into on the next slide. Uh, next slide, please, Erin. That, um. The two that I want to call out, uh, in F Y twenty-four are contract services, which is primarily special ed transportation. We've had, um. Some relief during, um. Well, it's tied to, to tuition. So we have two factors. We have, uh, a few, a couple of extra students that have gone out of district since the budget was created. And, um, the transportation that's, uh, associated with those tuitions is also a factor. So that the fifteen percent for out of district tuitions. And the eight percent for contract services are really what's driving the four point, um, six percent you saw on the other slide. Um, other than that, um, you know, I, I do think the inflation affects supplies and materials, but. For the most part, the other items are more stable. Um, one big variable on the teacher salaries is how many. Teachers retire. Um, and so, um. The more that retire, the lower that number is, the less that retire, the higher it is, and it's up. We'll get some information as we move forward in the budget process. And adjust accordingly. Um, but at this stage in the game, it's, um. That this number factors in, it will have four retirements. Um, and then in F Y twenty-six, we've, we've. Those. Yellow highlighted numbers in non-teacher salaries and, and other expenses, um, reflect the five hundred thousand in savings. Um, uh, when we have a, a new middle school. Um, those are the two categories of expenses that, um. Represent where the five hundred thousand dollars in savings were. Um, I would say, um, with any five-year forecast, that, you know, we have a little bit more visibility to the first year and second year, but there's a lot of variability in school expenses. Um, and, um, so as we go out. We have less confidence in, in the forecasts, uh, because of those variables, but in the short term, a little bit more, uh, confident in them. Uh, next slide, please. And this is the high school, the regional school district view similarly, um. And you can see the, um, the, the cost growth, uh, at, at the general fund level across twenty-four to twenty-eight. Um, we're projecting to be, um, fairly, uh, reasonable levels. Um. And, um, we've also projected the, um. This, there's two ways the towns look at our budget. They look at our expense budget, uh, as you might as well. They also look at what's the assessment going to be for the regional school district to the town of Concord and to the town of, uh, Carlisle. And so the, the bottom section of this shows the revenues that we receive, um, general fund revenues for chapter seventy. Chapter seventy-one is the regional transportation. And when you deduct those revenues. Um, that's the assessment to the towns. Um, so between, uh, so using F Y twenty-four as, as an example, it's thirty-three million. One fifty-one, two ninety-six. It will be assessed to, uh, Concord plus Carlisle in total. Uh, the next slide will show how that's broken out. Um, Erin, can you, uh, move? Uh, actually this has a little bit more, um. Detailed by category. I, I don't think there's anything that really jumps out here. Um, we'll see this again in October, so I think I'm going to skip this slide and, and go to the next one, Erin, please. And so when you look at the twenty-four projection, what we've done is, um. Looked at, um, for twenty-four, we took the opening day student counts. Uh, we know what those are. Um, these will actually be split on the October one school, uh, student counts by each town, but, uh, we wouldn't anticipate that to change too much. Uh, at all. And, um, so based on that, that's how we allocate our budgets to Concord and Carlisle. And you can see. There's a bit of a shift. If you look at last year, the percentages for Concord were a little higher. Um, and it's declined about one percent, uh, in, in Carlisle's increased one percent. Carla is aware of this shift. They've been planning for it. Um. But if you looked at our two point seven or two point eight percent increase that we projected in spending. It equates to one point six for Concord and seven point one for Carlisle. Um, so that's kind of just. You know, this was presented, um, early. I do think it was helpful, even though, um, it was a little bit challenged to get done early to give the, the town of Concord. Um, in town of Concord, uh, Carlisle, a picture of, of kind of how these things would look. We certainly have work to do to. Flesh this out. These are not our final numbers. We get news every day about things that increase, decrease and. Um, it's not, uh. It's not. It is fluid. It's not, uh, static. So. Uh, that's where we are now and, um, we'll, we'll present an update, um, as updates as we move forward.
I have a question. Where does the Mecco funding fall into the budget?
That would be part of the grants. Um, if we could, uh, go back a slide, two slides, Erin. So, um, if you see the funding sources, um. At the top of total expenditures down to the funding sources section. So the grants includes, uh, the Mecco grant. It includes, uh, within grants. It's also title one. It's also a special ed grant. So all our grants are, are. Um, in that grant category, um. And that would pay for a portion of our Mecco program costs. Um, but not all of it. We also pay for that, uh, a substantial portion out of our general funds. Um, it's in our kind of core budget as well. So I think the, the Mecco, um. Grant amount per student is, is substantially less than we spend per student. But that's how we're able to offset it.
So you should have seven thousand?
Yeah. And our first, our first student expenditure is about twenty-three thousand for, for the district.
And that would all be presented in the general, uh, budget.
It would. Uh, we don't necessarily call it out specifically as saying this is supporting, um, you know, Mecco programs, but we within the general fund have, um, you know, tutors. Um, supporting, uh, Mecco program. Transportation is a piece that. We get some funding for significantly, but, um, the cost for transportation, we've had, you know, the athletic buses afterwards. So. Um, we don't get full support from Mecco grant for those things and we'll just, it'll be part of our transportation budget.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is, is so like that we can go back and have a. Fair understanding of how we can present things to, um, not only the families, but people, you know, who, who work out of the state house. And, and allocate funding toward these Mecco. Um, but you're saying you only spend seven thousand. Uh, Mecco only gets seven thousand toward the twenty-three thousand dollar budget for a student. That's a big gap. And you know, the services that we're looking to have, you know, be a part of those students. Day-to-day operations is going to require to, to, to that gap. That's a pretty big gap. Uh, I know in Boston, they spend about, you know, about the same. And there's things that students still require. And if, 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 the district, um, is not able to achieve. Um, bringing in that extra resource, then those students are pretty much left wayside. And that, and that's something that, you know. The general public doesn't have a knowledge of. Um, you know, we're only, uh, understanding that, um, Mecco is putting up there for your share. And, you know, to hear that today, that, you know, they're only putting up a small percentage of that. We will, myself, I would like to know whether, whether all the funding that Mecco receives pursuing those. Is it, is it being used for administration in Boston? Um, is it used for other things? Um, you know, to, to hear the director tell us, Mecco paid for this and Mecco paid for that. And then to come here that, you know, seven grand out of twenty-three thousand, um, is all that the district is getting. It is troubling for me because. Now I see the reason why, you know, a lot of parents are pushing for more services, but you can't get more or less. Um, the only way we can fix that is by having those actual numbers to go back and, and, and explain, um. To the hundred and, I believe it was like a hundred and thirty families. Yeah. So they can understand, you know, what's, what's the importance of them actually advocating. For more fun.
I'd, I'd be happy to as part of the, or as a supplemental piece to the budget to. Do some digging to kind of come up with a way to summarize it that. Is transparent, you can see, um. It, it'll take a little time to do that, but, but, you know, we have a budget presentation in December, so maybe before then we can come up with something.
Bob, you gave us some fiscal twenty-four, uh, bumps in the sped lines, the two sped lines. Does that, uh, presume? Does, does that suggest that we're incurring those unanticipated costs this year? And that's why we know about them for next year? So we're going to revisit that with some light item changes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. I mean, to the extent we can, we can look to offset them. They might not necessarily, just remember that was a all-funds budget presentation. So, you know, we have, um. Some offsets that we can use potentially like the, there's some remaining money in the Sped ARPA grant, not a lot. We have circuit breaker funds that we could potentially dip into, um. But I see, you know, I, I, I just feel like there is a little bit of. Cost pressure. There's a, you know, we have a balancing act. We, we don't want to deplete the S R funds to, to solve current year problems and then not have S R funds in the future. So. Um, it's still early and, um. I think that, uh, we may find some other areas where we, we can have savings, but, um. I don't want to rely on a hope. So we'll, um, we'll continue to look at it and, um. See where we can get to.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you very thorough. And, and we had a great, um, we actually had a great meeting. Pre-meeting with Perishar, which I think was really helpful and exactly what they were looking for. And I, you guys went last week and. Was exactly what they were looking for. So, so we're all on the same.
It was helpful to get that.
Yeah.
Dance preview with them.
Yeah, definitely. And we can do more of that if we need to do that as we go through.
Yeah, we definitely should.
Is it, I think it was helpful for all of us. So, okay. Um, all right. And now we're on to our practices and our protocols. And I think Alexa and I touched a little bit about like a, a way to handle this in an easier vote than we might've had earlier in the meeting. So. Um, you've all gotten a chance to look at the practices and protocols that were sent to you. With some modifications and you have a suggestion.
Yeah. So, so if you remember before our September thirteenth meeting, everybody saw the practices and protocols. Most of you, um, sent suggestions about things you might want edited or things that seemed a little off. Remember, we all hated the word timeout to refresh your memory. That was sort of one of the things. Um, then on the September thirteenth meeting, I took us through everybody's suggestions. We went through a very pretty efficient process, um, of. Uh, amending the protocols, if you will. We got to a really good place. I had expected to. Vote on those tonight, and I think we still can. Um, Court did send a couple of ideas that. Um, we could incorporate and if I'm being totally transparent without meaning to editorialize. They're so innocuous that a part of me just wanted to put them in, um, and then say, can we vote on them? But that's not open meeting law. So, um, if we might, um, go through them. Um, and then say, can we vote on them, but that's not open meeting law, so um, if we might um, go through them. One by one um for your consideration, and again, not to editorialize that they are fairly innocuous, I think. Okay, so Aaron has started with the protocols. Um, if you all, if, Aaron, if you could scroll to protocol six. I'm gonna recommend, and I think it's on the one document that um, Aaron is showing. Um, that we amend the sentence and strike if they need questions answered. Court brought up the point that, you know, sometimes questions are fluid, and we didn't want anything in our protocols to suggest that questions. During a presentation were inappropriate, because they are not, so I'm gonna suggest striking that in accordance with one of his. Um, suggestions, Court found a typo in seven, that's been corrected, thank you, Court. Um, if we could scroll to number thirteen, Aaron. Um, I've added a sentence for everyone's consideration, it's in pink. That chairs will keep members and representatives abreast of media inquiries and responses, just so that was sort of a two-way street. You know, again, by virtue of um, our position, we sort of are the, the Tracy and I become the spokespeople, if you will. But so that if in fact we do engage in that role, we just sort of report back to you.
So.
Can I, yeah.
Yeah, I would like to have a little. Um, so in the past, the school committee really hasn't spoken for the committee in any. It, it, it only speaks on things that we've decided upon, if you follow me, like they could say we've voted on a forty-eight million dollar budget, or. That kind of thing, so in the past, the committee chairs have never really spoken about fu- future things that we haven't. You know.
Yeah, and I think, I think I view this sort of, and be, I mean, just conversationally, I view this the same way I view our. Um, responsibility of responding to public emails.
Right.
Like, we don't editorialize, we, we can report. Two things, things that are fact-based and public, already public.
Right.
So, yeah, so I think that goes without saying, we can certainly add it, but that I think is just sort of.
I just want to be sure.
Yeah, 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 oh, yeah, I'm not saying, no, I got no interest in that.
For my clarification purposes, and Sarah and Cynthia, I'll ask you to help me out on this, when I get um. And I'll, I'll just say the mosquito is, is wonderful, and I will respond and clarify things that happened in the meeting. Am I supposed to make the entire committee abreast of what I've answered questions to?
I think so, actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I've never seen it, that's why I'm just asking, is that, you know.
Yeah, historically, we haven't seen it.
We haven't done that before.
But we can add it.
So I, I'm just asking.
And we've got another newspaper, that's what I'm saying, so I think, you know, wouldn't be sure, especially like the regional matters, that we're saying the same thing. To do two different entities.
Um, so if I get a request on like clarification or meeting, I'll just inform them.
Yeah, I think it's good, or just say you got an inquiry from the mosquito on block, I don't have to have.
Quite, quite simply, if you copy us, we don't learn about it when we read the paper.
Right.
Well, and it's usually on things like, can you share the document that you refer?
No, no, it's a mechanical thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, uh.
It's, it's like.
It's a pro forma thing.
Yeah. If it's that, I'm honestly.
That's what it is, if it was more than that, I would share that, but that's really what it is.
Right.
If you want me to, I'm happy to do it, I would just like guys.
You know the difference.
Okay, okay.
You know what I'm saying.
Okay, great.
Um, so. We'll move on to fourteen, fourteen has been part of our protocols for five years, it was nothing that was amended. Court felt it was sort of redundant. Um, anyone wanna talk about it, meaning that it, it is, it is.
Well, my.
Mass general law that.
My, my comment specifically was, quote, we do not have a choice about following laws and regulations. And so I was curious why we would selectively add certain of them to our protocols. I mean, it's okay, but.
I only, the only reason I would consider it, keeping it, is, is this is potentially a public-facing document. There are, there is so much sensitivity around public comment, um, and our, and our apparent, you know, disengagement. From people at our meetings, I, I do think it is another place where we remind. That this is not a meeting that we're meant to engage with people not on our committee, I think that's, my guess is that's why it's been there. I don't know if people have thoughts.
Let me just judge it, can you cite the law?
I mean, sure.
So like that, then they can refer to it, because then it's actually like, I can't say this, this is why, you go look it up, and then it's not like. A back and forth, but you know.
Because I do make that, like, I mean, you heard me say it tonight, it's hitting in the public, not with the public, you know, and, and I think for me, I like it in there because of that. And we could add that reference.
Anyone else have thoughts? Going once, twice?
I, I understand your rationale.
Sorry, are you cool to keep it? Okay, so we'll strike that, and fifteen was a typo.
Can you go back to number eleven?
Sure.
Just. Cause that, that one I commented on as well.
Oh, sure, you and I had talked about this, this was something, um, the superintendent, oh, so Court's concern was. Um, is there a risk if we refer constituent to a principal for a su- for example, that the superintendent would be upset?
Well, it's, it, it's back to that no surprises stuff, you know, um. Do we run the risk of a principal getting ahead of the superintendent? Uh, in terms of a, a problem that a constituent believes uh is going on. And so.
Yeah, I'd like to be aware of anyone you're referring back to a principal, I would agree with that.
All right, so eleven. So we'll just say refer constituents to the superintendent.
I don't mind that you refer them to the principal, I just like to know that you did that, if you hear, if I'm saying that clearly.
And or.
Um, and alert the superintendent.
There you go, communicate with superintendent, whatever.
Everyone.
There you go, notify.
And notify, yeah, there it sounds, yep. Is everyone comfortable with that?
No, because, because I communicate through the chairs.
Yes.
Oh, inform the superintendent through the chairs, or.
Yeah, just clarify it.
I like it, we're getting specific, through the chairs, okay. So our new eleven will read, school committee members and representatives will follow the chain of accountability. School committee members and representatives will refer constituent to the appropriate administrator and notify the superintendent through the chairs. When listening to a concern rather than trying to manage it themselves. We like it?
Yeah, I really like this one, because sometimes you are in a situation, I, I mean, I'll just speak on. We've all been there, and you have some, gee, look what happened in my kid's class, I'm like, okay, I, I can't, I can't help you with that. But, you know, and it gives you that ability to say, to listen, and then say, have you spoken to, or, or whatever, it is just a good reminder.
Okay, so when we go, as, as long as we've had a robust discussion on these changes. Um, when we go to approve them, it will be under the assumption that these changes are acceptable from our discussion. Everybody, thumbs up on that, good, good.
Yes, this is a much easier way to handle things, so, again, in, in minutes and things like that, in the future, I will probably handle it in a similar fashion.
And then Aaron, if you wanna switch to the practices document. Um, okay.
Are we up?
Yep. Um. Uh, as a formality, two, uh, we have in the first sentence that agendas will be distributed by the assistant to the superintendent. Um, you know, technically, I think in that, in Aaron's capacity of doing that, she is this school committee secretary. Anyone have a preference of how, how we refer to her?
Uh, I.
Court liked secretary.
Well, given the fact that it's school committee we're talking about, she's our agent for this, she's Lori's agent for many, many other things.
Everyone cool with that? By the school committee secretary. Oh, geez. Okay.
Is Aaron fine with that?
I'm sorry.
You've appointed her to that, so.
Point her to that in our.
For now.
And, and perhaps it was maybe my feeling about using the word secretary versus assistant. And technically, she is the school committee secretary.
Yeah, I mean, it's also like. Yeah.
It's right.
Um, okay, four was just a personal thing for Court. Um. But, oh, Court, you might, you might have missed this, we had already removed all, in our nine thirteen discussion, all references to topics. So we just nixed it, so that makes.
So let's move.
Um, so then. In number six, we talk about the consent agenda, um, and you wrapped, you ma- made a reference to Robert's rules. How would you like that worded, I didn't?
I, I would open up to the committee, um, this is uh, something that really relates to uh, meeting. Um, meeting protocols specifically, um. So should we reference it, any thoughts about that? I mean, when we're confused, that's what we default to, am I correct?
Correct, I'm trying to think, do we reference it anywhere?
Oh.
Reference, reference.
I'm certainly.
Cause I have another question.
Yeah, I'm certainly not gonna insist on it, but I wanted to open it up for committee consideration.
Concept of a consent, I don't know, I, I, I think I'm a little dopey here, I don't get what you mean.
Well, this makes me think about um, where we are with the school committee manual, because a lot of these things are spelled out in there.
Yep.
So. I don't know what, what we're planning to do to review and approve that.
Yeah, doesn't, doesn't the manual start with, like, the school committee meetings follow Robert's rules? It's like, it's one, I feel like it's one of the first lines of the.
It's in there for sure, I, off the top of my head, I couldn't exactly where. So.
I look at this, it's, these are general practices, and maybe the manual's more specific, would that be fair to say that our manual's more specific? We will.
It has more, that's for sure.
Yeah.
More, we will be reviewing it, and, and, you know.
I think it got brought up because we haven't really been using consent agendas in our meetings, so I think that was why it was pulled out.
Well, no, and no, it was always there in our practices, this is just a modification, this is not.
So we haven't been using it, so I wouldn't remove it yet, so you've actually gotten a routine going on it.
So to your point, Court, I think a lot of this is spelled out in the manual. Um. Which I'm not sure what the timeline is for reviewing that.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that soon, we wanna get.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't wanna hang us up on this.
Yeah, so why don't we leave it, and then we'll re- when we review the manual, we'll make sure that all of that is in there, spelled out.
In, in a sense, it's similar to the one about uh, you know, laws and regulations.
Okay.
Where it's de facto so, but we're, we're calling it out anyway, for a particular reason.
Okay.
Um, and we're not calling out many other things in Robert's.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, we're not calling out many other things in, in jail.
Okay, so in this, you will have. The big change is um, how we distinguish Aaron, and how we name Aaron. So that will be the big change as we move to vote, which, if everybody's comfortable with where we are.
Keep going.
Yeah, I wanna see seven in its entirety too.
There were no comments on that.
I know.
But it came up earlier tonight, let's see.
And we talked a little bit about this before, um, but a lot of other school committees do this, where they sign their protocols and practices. So that might be something, and they put it very public-facing on their website, and we would have school group members, our representatives. And our student representatives all kind of sign, like, here we are committing to this, so, so that's also something that we would maybe.
Talk about.
Talk about, yeah.
Sort of like an acknowledgement letter.
Yeah, like a solidarity, like doing this.
Sure, we're doing this, and we're all in it together, we're all doing it, it would just be a good way for us to show the public that we have all, as this entire group. Plus our student representatives committed to that.
The vote does it too, it's just, it's extra flourish, really.
And, and it's more of like a, a, I, I mean, called public relations is really what it is, to, you know, put it forward.
I think confidence in the public.
We ready to move on to vote on these?
Right, on to our action items, then, if there's no further discussion. So we have two votes tonight, I don't think that there um, is a motion, there is not, I know there's not a motion in the agenda. To approve these practices and protocols as we've modified them, so if anyone would care to make that motion.
I move that we adopt the protocols and practices as amended tonight. Uh, in a document to be signed by. Um, school committee members, Mecco representatives, and our student representatives. And uh, that the. Um, the conclusion of the document uh referenced the date we voted on same. So the signature is a test to a vote.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Hey, well, thank you, Court, for even putting the signature in there, that was definitely like discussion, but if we're ready to move on to that, I think it. You know, for me personally, it just, it really signals the community that we are all part of this process, and are, you know, are. Mecca representatives, our school group members, and our student representatives, so I think it would be really great to put on a potentially new school committee website. If that ever comes to play, um, but we'll see.
I think it's perfectly fine, but I don't think it makes any committee vote less important than it was before we adopted this. One-time practice of signing something like this. A vote is, is binding, it's official, it's committee action, it's, it's, has all the strength of, of a signature.
Right, so we do a roll call then?
We have to roll call, yeah, so any more discussion? No, so roll call, please.
Anderson, I for both.
Who's I for both?
Marana, I for both.
Rainie, I for both.
Rankin, I for both.
Whit for region.
Wilson for region. Thank you, guys.
And I'm gonna ask Mingus and Ayesha, you guys cool with this, and, and our practices, our protocols? Comfortable with all of them, thank you. All right, um, and then we have a vote for a staff request, and this is.
Let me, I'm sorry. Uh, we. Appropriately asked our Mecco representatives, but a few minutes too late. Um, and we're assuming that our students are gonna sign this, but I think that's maybe, uh. Maybe, maybe a presumption, that's uh. Not the best thing to do. I think we need to ask them if they're comfortable with it, I don't, I don't want them doing this under duress, or assuming that we assumed. I just don't think it, I don't think it looks good for a school committee to, to do that, so.
Well, they weren't part of the discussion.
I, I uh, think my wording was a little bit misguided in that regard, so I would hope we approach this in a sensitive way.
We will, um, I, I think it would be great if.
Yeah.
Set up a meeting with our student reps, and, you know, just to go over some of this with them, and they certainly don't have to, because, you know, I mean, they're. They're doing a great job to themselves, but I would like them also to be more part of our process too. Um, and I think that they're looking to do that, but thank you for bringing that up, Court. Um, okay, so we have a staff request, and this is kind of standard, do you want, do you have any?
Yeah, this is actually the request of one of our new teachers uh to enroll. Her child at the high school, so she teaches there and looking to bring her son along, so. We're excited.
Okay, and does anyone?
No greater compliment than a teacher coming to join us and within a month saying, I want my child to come here.
I just tried, that's great. Um, and does anyone have the motion in front of them?
Move that's conquered. School, conquered school committee, which should read Congress Carlisle.
Oh, yeah.
I read that, I, I moved that's Concord Carlisle School Committee votes to approve the following staff request to enroll her child at Concord Carla High School. For the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and tuition be waived. Heather Palmer, CCHS teacher, son to enroll in tenth grade at CCHS.
Second.
Hey, any discussion?
For our Mecco reps, uh, when we uh accept a uh staff student um, for a year. The presumption is they will continue on uh, through grade twelve. If, if they so choose.
So it's like an incentive for the teachers to stay.
It's a benefit, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this, this vote is different than most, because you often, students start in, in earlier grades. Um, there could be two kinds of votes, either the one that where there's the Concord and the Concord Carlisle, or just the Concord Carlisle.
We actually offer the benefit to the Carlisle staff too. They start in K eight Carlisle, we will accept them into the high school, for the teachers in the Carlisle school.
That's great. Okay, so we'll take a roll call vote.
Anderson, I.
Who's I?
Marana, what?
Rainie, I.
Rankin, I.
Whit, I.
Wilson, I.
Okay, great, and um, at this point, this is for us to adjourn the Concord Carlisle School Committee. So I would actually change a motion for someone to adjourn the Concord Carlisle School Committee.
Quick question, our next meeting is at six?
Our next meeting, uh.
Yeah, well, is it six-thirty, we've agreed to do. Yeah, no, is at six thirty. We've agreed to do three meetings at six thirty to, you know, socialize. The twenty-fifth. We have a meeting on the October eleventh, that's at six thirty, I think.
Yes.
And then the twenty.
Yeah.
Fifth is earlier at, is, is, uh, a forum, oh no, is earlier and to accommodate a forum. Yeah, and then in November, we go to the sixth.
Which meeting are we doing our budget work at?
Which meeting are we doing our, uh?
Budget work, is it the twenty-fifth?
The workshops, the workshops are.
No, no, being, are we getting a preliminary budget in October?
I think Bob has that.
Those are the guidelines, that's October eleventh.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna be sure we're not squishing a lot into that five o'clock meeting.
No.
Okay, no.
Okay, no, and so November, and it was in the district bulletin this week. Um, and if you are a school-aged parent, you've probably got the district bulletin. Otherwise, it's in your school committee spam folder from the info at Concord Public, I think. For some reason, our emails go there, and I did note our change of meeting time starting in November would move to six o'clock.
But, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, 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 so, okay.
So, roll call to adjourn, or no, we don't have.
We need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I thought we did.
Thank you. Okay, they already made it, I'm sorry.
Oh, we did.
No.
Notice, any discussion? We're good. Okay, roll call, please.
Anderson, I.
Who's I?
Marano, I.
Rainie. Whit, I.
Wilson, I.
Thanks, Carlisle.
Terrific. Good night.
All right.
Hey, thank you, Carlisle.
So.
And, and I should just add, Domingo, soon you can feel free to leave at this point or stay through Concord Carlisle.
I'll hang up.
Good.
Choice is yours.
I'm like, the choice is yours.
Um, so we just have one agenda item, which is our favorite agenda item here at the Concord Public Schools, which is. The middle school building update. Um, I will say there have been a tremendous amount of meetings. And one person has been to them all, and that's Dr. Hunter. Oh, do you go to the.
Matt missed a minute yet of all of this.
Yeah, you don't. You did, I forget if you were there, but in any event, um, I don't know, it, it might make sense for you to just sort of.
Sure, I can just frame it. I think you're all pretty close to it, but, um. Through the building committee, I guess I'll start there. The building committee's finished value engineering after. Uh, seven meetings since July, um, with a really extensive list. So we feel good about that process. We were able to close a delta from five million to about three. Um, between the estimate in July and the acquired money at town meeting, so that's a good amount of progress there. Um, in terms of the work, you know, and a shout out to Matt, the select board's been working really hard to look at timelines for special town meeting. And I think we'll be deciding on Monday night after a couple of preliminary meetings. We met with the finance committee on Thursday night, and I talked with them on where we were at and heard their feedback. Much of it also was about how we make our way to special town meeting, some history on the V E process. And how we got to where we are. So everyone synced up, I think, at this point. Uh, on Thursday, the building committee will meet again. We have some housekeeping to do on other things that we haven't been doing during all the, the V E work. Um, talk a little more on special town meeting timelines, so that, uh, we can give some background information the select board asks for. Just on sort of packaging all of it into one place, so they feel fully informed for, for Monday night, so. It's been a journey for sure, a lot of time and commitment by a lot of people, the building committee, the select board, the finance committee and this committee. And I think a lot of work to stay communicative about it and stay on the same page. And, um, and then we go from there. I think probably otherwise worth noting that the sixty percent bid documents are due out. Uh, at the end of the week by the, uh, professional team. And so then we'll be waiting for that sixty percent number to come back and help us know where we are relative to the changing economy. Since July, so interesting times for sure, but. Moving forward.
Yeah. Thank you for that, because it, it has been particularly active in the past few months. And it's a lot to keep track of, but I will say it is a testament to the leadership on all these committees. That everyone has been really collaborative and understanding and, um, getting the work done together, so.
Yeah.
Um, with that, anyone have any other? Editorial on the thoughts?
I'd like to thank Alexa and Court for going to all those seven thirty AM meetings, because they are, it is not for faint of heart, and they are not just hour-long meetings. I mean, it's like, they're like three hours.
Longer.
Well, and to that end.
It's like coffee into lunch.
I thought it was like a seven thirty to nine situation, it clearly is not, so thank you for your time on that.
Yeah, and Dr. Hunter.
Come join us for coffee and lunch.
See what flavor of yogurt on.
Um, all right, well, thank you, everyone, and with that, I would move to adjourn the.
Correction.
Oh, sure.
The Concord DI Commission is chaired by Rose Crassley and Josh Lee.
Thanks, Cynthia.
All right.
All right, thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.